All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's ANC 34G regular scheduled meeting. My name is Lisa Gore. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The time is 6:34. We have quite a few things on the agenda. I see a couple of people that I'm really excited to hear from that are students at one of our local schools. Hi, Susie or Marley. So glad y'all are on tonight. All right, so we'll get started. First thing we'll start doing is commissioner introductions and I'll start and then I'll go from my screen left to right. Again, my name is Lisa Gore. I'm the commission chair and I am also the single member district commissioner for ANC 3G, 34G 01, which is all of Hawthorne, portions of Barnaby Woods, so around Pinehurst Circle and over and back towards the tributaries, my territory. Thanks for coming tonight. Commissioner Finacy?
Hi, my name is Laura Finacy. I have a single member district four, so I have basically between Utah and Broad Branch Road and also the area, including Lafayette School and Lafayette Pointer Park.
Thank you. Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I'm Peter Goslin. I represent District Six, which is largely the west side of Connecticut, between Military and Western Avenue and the circle, back to 42nd Street with the peninsula to the east where I live. Welcome.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. My name is Liz Nagy. I'm commissioner in SMDO seven, which is the south side of Military over to the east side of Nevada, down toward the north side of Chevy Chase Parkway and the east side of Reno Road. Thanks for coming.
Commissioner Simmons?
Commissioner Simmons, I'm also the treasurer. I have the east side of Connecticut from Legation auto way to Western back to Broad Branch that borders Ward three and four.
Commissioner Sherman?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bruce Sherman. I'm the commissioner for District Two, which butts Rock Creek Park on the east and is bordered on the south by Military and on the north by Tennyson and on the west by Oregon.
And Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, good evening. I'm Carol Grunwald. I'm the ANC commissioner from Single Member District 03. And the boundaries of my district are as follows. Utah Avenue to the northeast, 27th Street to the east, Broad Branch Road to the south and to the west, McKinley on the north, and then it jogs north and east along Nebraska where it rejoins Utah Avenue.
Okay, thank you commissioners. At this time, we'll discuss the meeting procedures and see if there's any changes to the agenda before we adopt it. And regarding meeting procedures, they're pretty simple. Just be respectful of everyone's comments and time. If you have a question that you want to ask the commission, we ask that you use the raise your hand feature. And if you're looking at the bottom of your screen and you hit the react button, there at the very bottom of that pops up, pop up, there's a feature that says raise hand. And when you do that, it automatically puts you in queue, so the chair knows to call on you. Community members generally three minutes to speak. Commissioners the same, three minutes to speak. I'll ask that commissioners speak once and then we'll allow other commissioners to speak before you speak twice. And just be mindful of the time when we call time on a subject. I ask that you just honor that. In terms of adoption of the agenda, I'll ask commissioners if they have any changes to the agenda first. There is one change at the top of the agenda. It says June 6th. It should be June 9th. That was my error and thank you for Commissioner Goslin for catching that for me. And I see Commissioner Finacy has her hand raised. I know she has an amendment she wants to make.
Yes, please. I would like to discuss the Lafayette School capacity briefly for some information that I have gotten since the DCPS has not responded to our request.
Then I'd just like to raise a...
Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I noticed that the Murray Field Task Force issue is down for 40 minutes. Now, I plead guilty to not reviewing this agenda until this afternoon. I've been doing a bunch of things in the district. I have an important doctor's appointment at 6:30 tomorrow morning. And so if there's any way we can tighten that up, that would be very helpful. I don't know, Bruce, it's, you're down as leading that discussion. I mean, we have to dissolve. I think the task force dissolves automatically or maybe we have to vote on it, but what else is at issue here?
So I sent a note earlier today, which it's all right if you haven't seen it, that's okay, but I was explaining what this topic, this item would entail. So it is discussing disbanding the task force, which probably requires actual action by the commission. It also is to hear from neighbors who have issues regarding construction on the field, matters concerning lighting and other sorts of things that they wish to address. And you'll recall that one of my constituents, Claudia Russell, asked that there be time made available at this meeting to discuss those issues the last time. So we're going to hear those concerns and then Trey Holloway and I have discussed that he would be present to answer those. So that's essentially what we have on the docket. And I think it's important to hear from any neighbors, since the task force now is being disbanded, about matters that linger, that are subject to Murray's attention as they look to get their certificate of occupancy.
All right, I just encourage us to be as tight as we can on that area and in all the discussions because you know, our lengthy meetings make it hard for other people, also for the commissioners themselves. Thank you.
Okay, in terms of Commissioner Finacy's discussion, I suggest we put that after...
Did I go on after the slip plane?
That's what I was gonna suggest. I think that's the best place for it, after the slip plane discussion, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, and I won't be too long. I think it's sort of maybe a prelude to another discussion later.
Okay. Any more changes to the agenda commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I move that we block the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Nagy, you want to proceed with the adoption of the ANC meeting minutes?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had, am I looking at the right agenda? Is the race committee not on here?
There's a second draft.
Maybe the old one.
Okay, yeah, I pulled the one off the website. I'm sorry. So where's the new one at?
Should be.
It's in an email that Lisa sent a few days ago. It's an attachment to an email.
I have to say, I'm looking at the same agenda that Corinthia is looking at, I guess.
I, after you asked for race to be added onto the agenda, I sent it right back like probably three minutes after you asked that.
Oh, no problem. I just thought it would be on the website.
Yeah.
It's hard to keep up with the emails, so I just go to our website because I know, I thought it would be there, so my apologies.
No, I might have caught the very first one and put that up and didn't see the immediate second one, so that's why it's up at the website.
Okay, but if that's so, then let us be clear. We are approving an agenda with with the race issue on it.
It's on schedule for 8:45.
Okeydoke.
Thanks. Bruce, do you mind putting it on the web? How can we share it so that community members know?
Well, we need to switch it out.
I mean, I can't switch it out while we're on the call, but I mean, I could. We could have it here, whatever.
If it's a Google Doc, you can put the link in the chat.
It's a PDF.
Yes, it's a PDF.
If you upload a PDF to a Google Doc, you could put it in the chat.
Is that the only difference? We're telling everybody that the race is going on at 8:45. Will that not suffice?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to move on anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so we're at the ANC resident forum, which is 15 minutes for residents to make comments to the commission that aren't on or discuss issues that aren't on the agenda. And I'm just gonna go in order. So committee members, if you have anything you want to raise, use the raise your hand feature and that'll put you in queue. John Wheeler first, then Karen Zuckerstein.
John, you're on mute.
You're on.
John, you can go ahead, but you're still on mute.
Okay, there we did it. It seems like every place has a different place to click. So I just wanted to announce to you, you probably all know about it. Commissioner Simmons has put it in her newsletter that on Tuesday, June 24th, at 7 o'clock at Blessed Sacrament Church, the Chevy Chase Citizens Association, the Womata and Friends of Bus Chevy Chase is hosting a meeting to talk about the new bus schedules. Every, as I'm sure all of you know, everything changes June 29th. And a lot of citizens, no matter how much you tell them, they're gonna not know about it, but we hope to get the word out to as many people as possible. And we would like for you to advertise your constituents. By Wednesday evening, we will provide you with more detail on the information, on what to share with your constituents. But this, the idea of this meeting is, is the Chevy Chase residents know just how the bus transit is changing. And also on this note, something that affects me very personally is the bus route, the C-83. I think Lisa was involved a long time ago insisting that that route, the old E6, was, because it was the only service in Hawthorne and Barnaby Woods. And then more recent Commissioner Sherman, for us at Nowood, the bus wasn't coming here. It was going to be down at the drive, which practically no one could get to. And it took having a meeting with Womata people that Bruce organized, that I realized they thought that we were, that we were served by a 36-foot bus, which is what used to be the case. But for ever since I've lived here, it's been a 40-foot bus. And so while they were outside waiting to come in, a 40-foot bus come in and it took away their whole argument. They were gonna tell us, we can't come in because the buses, the new buses are bigger. So thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Lisa. And we expect that come June 29th, we will have the new bus service, the C-83, which will go from Nowood to Chevy Chase. So right now, we don't have access to downtown Chevy Chase and on to Friendship.
Thank you. Great news. Karen?
Hi, I'm Karen Zuckerstein. If I can take a second to give a little bit of background. I am a member of the DC's Commission on Aging. I am the only member from Ward Three. And I will put my contact info in the chat so that if you have any issues affecting older adults in our community, please contact me if you have an interest in getting more involved in the commission. Ward Four has, I believe, three members on the Commission on Aging. So that's just an FYI. I do live in ANC 3G in Commissioner Simmons' Single Member District. So, but the reason I'm here tonight is that I am also on a task force that was created by the council to oversee a study on potential senior wellness centers in Wards Two and Wards Three. As many of you know, Wards Two and Three are the only wards that do not have a physical senior wellness center. A couple of years ago, money was put into the budget and a contract was finally awarded this past, I think, January to examine the feasibility. It requires the identification of at least three potential sites in each of the wards for a senior wellness center. It also asks for input on how, the priorities for how that space is used. In support of that feasibility center study, the Department of Aging and Community Living, DACL, is gonna be holding two town halls later this month in only a couple of weeks. So one is in person. It's on Tuesday, June 24th at the Cleveland Park Library. I put this information into the chat. At 4:30 in the afternoon, there will also be a virtual town hall on Wednesday, June 25th at 1:00 PM. And the town hall will talk, is intended to get input on sort of what the community's preferences are in terms of transportation preferences and how you would expect to get to a senior wellness center. There are, well, you know, how dependent you are on public transportation, whether you expect to be driving or would like to walk or whatever, and what locations fit with that. It also is to get input into how those spaces should be used. So whether there'll be a dance studio or an art studio or a gym, basketball court, those kinds of priorities. So I would urge you to try to make one of these town halls. There's a possibility that the survey that's at the end of this, these town halls will be made available independently for people to fill out. And I will certainly be posting on the listserv if that happens, but right now I'm not hearing any discussion of that, which is unfortunate. But so I would urge you to try and make one of these town halls and provide input. And just, I'm sure everybody's heard that we're in a very difficult budget environment. And if I were sitting there, I'd be wondering where this money is coming from. Well, I guess the good news from a budget perspective is there's not going to be a lot of demand for budget money in the near future because this is a very long process. And right now, in last year's budget, there was a small amount of money in the capital budget for a Ward Two center. There was no money for Ward Three center. The, so hopefully, four years out or something, we'll start to see money in the capital budget. Chairman Mendelson is very fond of talking about how much flexibility there is in the capital budget. He has also said, when challenged at a meeting, that he expects to see a senior wellness center west of Rock Creek Park, while he is still chair, whatever that means. He was very assertive. There will be a senior wellness center west of Rock Creek Park. But in terms of the demands on the operating budget, we are years away from that and hopefully our financial position will look a lot different than what it does, what it is now.
Thanks, Karen. I really appreciate that update. The ANC, and you probably know, under former Chair Speck, really put a lot of attention into advocating for the feasibility study as well as just in general of facility in Ward Three. So that's something that the ANC should keep on top of.
Right. And can I just add to the, Ward Four members of this ANC may want to talk to Janice George about viewing this as a west of Rock Creek Park senior wellness center. Right now, the survey that's gonna be included in these town halls only ask if you live in Ward Two and Ward Three. It does ask for neighborhood, but I would certainly like to see the neighborhoods in Ward Four included in that survey. So that is something to reach out to Janice George about as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Chair Gore, I just posted in the chat that the DC Attorney General, Brian Schwab, is hosting a series of civic engagement forums, community forums in June and July around workers' rights, housing and policy initiatives and public safety. And I think all those are being held at libraries the first, tomorrow night in Northeast at Laan Riggs, all at 6:00, 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. So just wanted to pass that on.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay, all right. No other community comments? Seeing none? We will move on to Mokers and council member staff.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kendall Gibson. I'm the Ward Three manager in the Mokers office. It's good to see you all again. I'm gonna yield most of my time to the discussion that we have later on the agenda regarding the budget, but I did want to plug that I'm hosting our office hours in Chevy Chase Library on Friday, the 20th, from 3:30 to 5:00 PM. I'll be sure to also promote this in listservs. What we typically talk about, since I'm on every single ANC meeting, are things that aren't covered in ANC meetings. So if you have a personal issue that you would like me to help you address with the assistance of DC agencies, that's what I'm there for. So feel free to swing by. It's first come, first served, but if you don't mind waiting five minutes, I'll make sure I talk to everybody who comes before I leave. But I look forward to seeing you on the 20th at 3:30 to 5:00.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else from any other council member staff online?
Bruce has a question.
Commissioner Sherman? You're muted, Bruce.
Sorry about that. I just want to commend Kendall and her colleague Owen Cox for their intervention in resolving the improperly issued infractions to my constituents, the Hamblins on Oregon Avenue, when a tree fell through their roof. And then, once the house was inspected by a DOB official noting that this had happened, another DOB official cited them with three infractions totaling $2,500 for not maintaining their property. So it was an absurd circumstance that took us some time to get worked out, but Owen and with Kendall backing him up, both were very helpful with DOB in resolving that. So thank you, Kendall, and thank you, Owen.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherman. I'll pass it along to Owen. He did the heavy lifting on that one.
He did, yeah, thanks.
Just so I understand this, are you telling me that DOB cited them for a tree falling on their house?
DOB cited them for infractions that the second inspector did not realize were the result of the tree falling on their house, even though the DOB inspector had, another one had been there four days prior, just hours after the tree fell on their house, documenting the fact that the tree fell on their house. Anyway, yeah, but all's well that ends well.
All right.
Wow. All right. All right. So our first presentation is by Marley Alprin and Susie Garrity. And Marley sent me an email. She lives in my single member district, so I'm so proud to have her and Susie presenting to us tonight on Beyond Gas. And they can, if you raise your hand on that raise your hand function, Marley and Susie, it'll move you to the top of the screen. There you go. Go on and introduce yourselves and then who is gonna be presenting, Marley? Is it you or Susie? Okay, so I'm gonna make you right now co-host, so you'll be able to share your screen. But go on and introduce yourselves. Tell the folks why you're, what you're presenting tonight, where you're from, and why you're doing this presentation.
Hi, my name's Marley. I go to Jackson Reed and Susie and I have been working with Beyond Gas for our capstone project with the Sierra Club. We do talk about it in our presentation, but that's just a little preview.
All right.
My name is Susie. I'm a freshman at GDS and I'm really excited to give this presentation about Beyond Gas.
All right. Okay, so I'll turn it over to you guys. You can go on and start your presentation and then we'll ask in the committee, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions at the end.
Okay. Tell me when, you can see this?
Yep.
Yes, okay. So welcome to our Beyond Gas presentation. As I said, I'm a sophomore at Jackson Reed and Susie is a freshman at GDS. We are part of the Sierra Club of the DC Chapter for the Climate Leaders Program 2025. For our capstone project, we have been working with Beyond Gas for the past few months. We've studied the health and environmental impacts of gas in homes and the benefit of electric stoves and heat pumps. We've also been trained to test for nitrogen dioxide in kitchens with special equipment. We are here to raise awareness that gas stoves can harm your health. Everyone knows that gas emissions from cars contributes to global warming, but did you know that your gas stove could be polluting the air in and outside your home? The climate threat. In the last few decades, natural disasters have increased dramatically in the DMV and throughout the nation, including fires, droughts, floods, hurricanes, and more. The LA fires are just one recent example, and something a little closer to home was the flood in Maryland in 2018. These climate disasters, along with broader global warming, devastate lives and should be at the top of all of our minds when considering our individual actions as well as our collective actions in society. What's adding to climate change? In DC, buildings, mainly heating, cooling and cooking, use a significant amount of energy and, as you can see from the graph, contribute to the majority of emissions in DC. One California study concluded that if all LA buildings were electrified, it would result in 354 fewer deaths from air pollution and would save $3.5 billion in health benefits each year. Gas stoves and methane. Gas appliances such as gas stoves and furnaces emit methane and nitrogen dioxide. Methane is a punted greenhouse gas that damages the atmosphere and causes climate change. While nitrogen dioxide can be very dangerous for you and your family's health, especially in children. Lower-income communities also are at a greater risk because of the smaller spaces, poor ventilation, and higher levels of pre-existing conditions. A Cooking Up Danger report in 2024 tested homes for nitrogen dioxide. Almost 700 homes were tested throughout DC and Maryland. Of those 700 homes, three-thirds, two-thirds contained high levels of NO2. Beyond Gas also tested for gas leaks outside. They found 400 active methane gas leaks across eight wards. And 14 out of 389 leaks were exceeding 50,000 parts per billion, which is 5% of volume, and that can be potentially explosive. Our testing, as I mentioned, we tested the gas stoves of family members, friends and neighbors. We turned on the stove and we tested each stove every 15 minutes to monitor the NO2 levels. After 30 minutes, we turned off the stove to measure how quickly the gas dissipated. Each test took about an hour. We tried to simulate how the family would realistically use its stove. For context, the EPA outdoor limit for one hour exposure for dangerous NO2 levels is 100 parts per billion. Because the EPA doesn't have guidelines for inside buildings, we don't know how the enclosed spaces could affect the health risk. But it's likely that these levels of NO2 can become even more dangerous. In our sample of 11 homes, many of the kitchens had stoves that measured either moderate or unhealthy levels of NO2. And our average reading for both the 15 and 30 minute marks were above 100 parts per billion, which makes it unhealthy for sensitive groups. The image shows Susie and me testing her stove and me, and the measuring device is on the counter. So what can we do? We can transition to electric appliances. Most gas appliances have an electric counterpart that perform the same function and is usually cheaper and more effective. I talked to a friend of mine and they told me how they moved into a house that didn't have a gas line. They thought about adding one, but from a neighbor, they learned about the health risk and of gas stoves. So they did their own research and found induction is as good, if not better for cooking and safer if you have children. They got an induction stove and love how easy it is to clean. They, there are always pros and cons to anything, but with your own research and open mind, you could experience the benefit of electric appliances.
So here's what to know about electric appliances. There are three main types of electric appliances we talk about, which are heat pumps that heat and cool your home, heat pump water heaters and induction cooktops. Heat pumps can reduce electricity use for heating and cooling by 75%. They dehumidify better than standard central air conditioners, which is better for cooling homes in the summer. Plus they're more resilient than air conditioners and furnaces, outsold gas furnaces since 2021. Heat pump water heaters use electricity to move heat from one place to another instead of generating heat directly. So they can be two to three times more energy efficient than conventional water heaters. Lastly, induction cooktops can boil water 20 to 40% faster than tested gas. They don't involve flames or direct heat, which makes them safer than gas stoves. Homeowners and renters can receive rebates and tax breaks to get induction stoves. Benefits of electric appliances include saving the climate. Methane gas burned in our homes contributes to the greenhouse effect, which heats up our world, causing icebergs to melt and sea levels to rise, leading to more dangerous and recurring natural disasters. By switching to electric, you can make a step towards less gas leaks and explosions, stop your household emissions and spread awareness about the clean energy movement. Another benefit is saving your health. Nitrogen dioxide is emitted when gases burned and can cause health problems. There's a 42% increased risk of developing asthma and 12% of childhood asthma is connected to the pollution of gas stoves. There's also a connection with IQ and learning problems in children. Lastly, there's an increased risk of respiratory symptoms and higher risk of lung infections, especially in children and the elderly. You can avoid all of this if you use electric or induction stoves. Lastly, saving money. Lower income communities, which have a greater risk of adverse health effects from gas, often are unable to pay for electric appliances out of pocket. But rebates make electric appliances free or at a very low cost, especially for those in need. However, regardless of your income, you can still receive rebates on buying and installing electric appliances. Go to the Rewiring America's IRA Guide and Savings Calculator to learn what you can receive. Plus, as gas becomes less popular, prices will go up, meaning it's more expensive in the long run. So what can you do right now? Although we encourage transitioning to electric appliances, if you're stuck with a gas stove, there are still many options to protect your health and your families. You can open windows, use a fan and use the hood fan if it vents to the outside. Many families don't use their hood fan because of the noise, but it can make a huge difference in the nitrogen dioxide levels. One of the main things we noticed during testing was how drastic the difference was with and without the ventilation. You can also get machines to test different types of gas in your house or kitchen to warn you if the levels get too high. Climate and other communities, including the Sierra Club and Beyond Gas, are working to move DC and our region towards a more sustainable future. Please join us in spreading the word. If you would like more information, here's a QR code that'll lead you to a fact sheet. And if you have questions, ask or put them in the chat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Marley, can you bring your presentation down so we could see the community here? All right. Commissioners, community members, you got some, uh, claps there. Great job, first of all. Um, so normally we turn to commissioners first. So I want to, I have some questions, but I will go with commissioners. So I see Commissioner Finacy has her hand raised.
Yeah, I just put in the chat, um, there's a, the link there for the DC rebate if you installed after October 1st. Um, and it has all the heat pumps and the stoves and all those things. And we just did induction about two years ago, not in time for the rebate, but it's been fantastic.
Awesome. Any other commissioner questions? So I, I have a, um, question and a comment. One, I want to let you know that your presentation, um, really hits to my heart for a couple of reasons. One, I spent my career in, um, federal law enforcement with the IG's Office of HUD. And in that capacity, worked in a lot of public housing communities across the states. Um, so, um, I am very concerned about, and I know DC has a, um, clean energy, um, bill that kind of targeted new construction. So I'm really concerned about public housing units, um, that might still have this type of technology in there and making sure that our older buildings are modernized. And two, I had a coworker that was actually unfortunately passed away from this. A gas explosion of her stove that was gas. Um, and that happened in New York City. So I'm really grateful that you guys are doing this. You don't really sometimes know the impact that you have until people actually tell you. So I'm telling you this to let you know that your presentation is important. Um, and you know, hopefully, um, you might save somebody's life one day because I know somebody that passed away from this. It was horrific. So thank you for doing it and telling your story and, um, keep doing it. Now, my question to you is, um, what do you think the district can be doing better in this arena? Um, have you guys amongst your group and in your cohort, um, talked about, you know, maybe additional legislation that should be on the table? Um, what do you, what have you guys have been talking about in terms of like, maybe a legislative process? Or have you been looking at it more from a community process?
Um, well, I think it's mainly about the information that's being sent around, especially because I didn't know most of this stuff while I was learning it and I was really surprised by it. And I want to make like changes now that I know my family and other people where we tested their stove have said that they're turning on the ventilation now. And that's just like one example of a small action to make a difference. So I feel like it's about the information being presented to everyone. Um, in terms of taking action, I think that's like the best step because people will move off when everyone else is because we're, we want to as a whole to make a difference.
Love it. Okay. Susie?
Yeah, I totally agree with Marley and I think that like the information we're spreading, because like so many of the people's homes that we've tested, they're like, we never used our ventilation and now we turn it on every time we come. And so I think it's really important, but I also completely agree with you that like, maybe the legislation that's happening right now isn't enough because it's great that all new buildings
Right.
are required to have like electric appliances. But it doesn't solve for people whose health is like being impacted and maybe like they don't have access to this information. And like, it can be really expensive to switch. And so like,
Hmm, mhm.
I think I'm not really sure about like any specific legislation that we've talked about, but I definitely agree that it's necessary.
Yeah, I, and that was, that's kind of my point. Um, and you, when you said it's expensive, that, you know, made me kind of think of some of the things that regarding the public housing aspect, and that was, you know, something I talked about in my race in 2022 is greening and cleaning up our public housing because that's where, and when, one of the things you might not be aware of is the A and C has what's called a racial and social equity committee, which kind of looks at these issues from a racial and social equity perspective. And when you think about this issue from that perspective, um, the people that are kind of left behind in the public safety mode of this topic are those that lived in, live in underserved communities. And those buildings that happen to be older have a tendency to be the ones that we use for public and assisted housing, whether that's someone that's actually in public housing or assisted housing that's like receiving a voucher. Um, so keep thinking about that. I'm looking forward to, uh, the great work that you guys are going to do on this issue. And you actually gave me some ideas to think about in the future. Let me go with Commissioner Sherman, then Nagy.
Yeah, Susie and Marley, thank you very much for the presentations. Very well done. You guys are very articulate. Great job. Um, two things. First of all, I do a newsletter to my constituents and I will send your presentation around to them. And particularly encourage them on the ventilation. Now, a quick question, how many homes in Chevy Chase on a percentage basis do you know use gas stoves? I don't know. I'm asking if you know. Not offhand. Okay. That's good enough. I'm sure quite a few. We have all gas appliances in our house. So what you're telling us hits home here. So thank you so much.
Great. Commissioner Nagy?
Thanks. Um, I gotta ask, we need a new hot water heater. Any ideas about which one? You talked about heat pumps. Did you guys look at any models? Got any tips? No. It was a great presentation. You have something to say, Marley? You put your hand up for a second.
Uh, well, I just wanted to say that during this process, our water heater actually broke. And my parents didn't really know which ones to go to. And when they were like looking for one, um, the people in like trying to sell them just told them to go with the, a gas one because it was going to be faster. So I also feel like when you're looking for something new and you have the time, it's good to do that research.
I think we have the time. I hope we do. Anyway, thank you very much. Great presentation and keep up the great work.
All right. And you have one question in the chat from Michelle Wollen. It says, what did you use to test emissions?
Oh, I just responded, but it was just the machine. Um, if you could see on the presentation, it's about yay big. Um, I just know it as the machine that tests the NO2 and it just tests NO2, no other gases. So that is something to keep in mind. We were only testing for NO2 when there could be other gases in the air.
Awesome. Any more community questions? Commissioner questions? All right. Seeing none. You guys are off the hook for tonight. Thank you so much. Y'all did an outstanding job. I really enjoyed it. Um, and you really gave the community some educational information that we're gonna, as Commissioner Sherman said, a couple of us has newsletters. It'll definitely go in mine as well. So thank you guys. Great job. Really happy. All right. So we'll move on to our next presentation. Um, Deidra Brown. Deidra, are you on? I saw her join.
I'm on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're up next. Okay. So this is Deidra Brown. She's Chair of the Ward Three Democrats, Democrats. Um, and I've known Deidra for a while, um, but she contacted me about a potential opportunity for a grant application, um, on a project that Ward Three Dems and Ward Four Dems are doing. Um, and just to let the commission know, I did check with Denise Victor to make sure that there wasn't any prohibition. Um, and I copied Commissioner Finacy because the initial site was Lafayette Corner Park. Um, so she was on the email to make sure there wasn't any issues with, um, the democratic bodies, um, requesting a grant application and there was none. So with that, I'm going to turn over the discussion to Deidra. Um, and just for the communities, um, and actually new commissioners, you might not be aware, we cannot discuss and vote on a grant application at the same meeting. So we have to have the discussion and then the vote follows at a subsequent meeting. So what she's going to do tonight is just give you the discussion and the overview and then we'll take the vote after the grant application is submitted and reviewed at a following meeting. Deidra?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Um, once again, my name is Deidra Brown, the Chair of the Ward Three Democrats. I'm before you today to solicit a grant for a community outreach event that we would like to have in July. Uh, the proposed project is a family fun day. It will be held on July 26th, um, between 11:00 and 4:00 PM. It will be held at the Lafayette Corner Park and Recreation. Um, the event is, the event is designed to provide a vibrant and inclusive community gathering for residents A and C three, four G, Ward three and Ward four. Uh, the event is co-sponsored by the Ward Four Democrats. Uh, the event will feature a variety of activities, including, uh, outdoor games, arts and crafts. Uh, we will have food that will be free to the public, uh, free water and a DJ. Uh, is the aim of the event is to foster community cohesion, provide a safe and enjoyable environment for families and neighbors to come together. I do want to point out that the event is nonpartisan. Everyone is welcome and it is not a fundraiser. We will not be charging anyone for any of the events or any of the activities. This is a community outreach initiative out, out of the Ward Three Democrats, um, Outreach Committee Task Force. Uh, I did include the application that I sent over to the commissioners and I do apologize that I didn't get that to you this afternoon. Uh, with that was a budget. We're budgeting approximately $3,950 and we're asking the A and C for a grant of $2,000. The rest of the funds will come from, um, Positioning Services, uh, funds from several council members who have indicated they will give us some funds and we also may get a few dollars from the, uh, DC State Democratic Committee. Uh, we will be also asking Giant and Safeway to donate water and ice. And we're hoping that we can get some, if not all, of the food donated from, uh, local vendors or restaurants. Uh, lastly, I just want to say that the, I wanted to point out the community benefits. The benefit of this event to the community is to bring about, uh, social interaction, community building. It's going to allow all, um, residents of Ward three and four, including three, four G, of course, of all ages and backgrounds to come together and be able to, uh, connect and relax in a fun, enjoyable day. We hope for good weather. And, um, I am here if you have any questions or if you need any clarifications. Thank you.
Commissioner questions? Commissioner Finacy?
Hi, yeah. Um, just a thought, we have, um, had events on the public space before. And one thing that has been really helpful is there've been like a forum where people kind of talk about things like, how are you going to deal with bathrooms? How are you going to deal with trash? You know, if, if the rec center is going to be open, if not, are you going to have porta potties or those kind of things? So I would ask, um, that we send that same form over like we've used it for the school, for their, uh, movie night or for their auction. And that it just really helps kind of think through any issues that might be, uh, problematic before, you know, and it kind of head them off at the pass.
Great. Send that over to me. I do have answers to your questions. We will have a porta potty and I should have said in my presentation, I've already got approval from DPR. I didn't get it till Friday. Um, but DPR has approved the events. I will have a porta potty. Um, I will be sending to uh, all of the commissioners. One day this week, I'm waiting for the young lady who's my contact, the DPR, to send me her approval email. From that, she said I'm supposed to forward it to you guys to get you to approve it as well and also forward to MPD. Uh, so they'll be aware for safety purposes, but I'm more than happy to fill out any Google form or whatever you have to answer the questions.
Commissioner Gossel?
Yeah, look, I hate to be a stick in the mud here, but, um, there seems to be something weird about, um, us giving a grant to Democrats. I, I mean, I, I mean, I'm all for a good time, but I mean, I, I mean, and I'm all for community engagement, but it, we're, I don't, I mean, we're not supposed to be political. I, so, uh, Lisa, what did, what did Denise Whitcore say? Um, I, I'm a little surprised that they would, uh, they'd enter.
Because it's a apolitical group. Dieter, you want to explain?
Ward three Democrats are an apolitical group?
The event is apolitical. The event is apolitical.
Right, so the event, so we did reach out. I was on that email chain as well. We did reach out to the ANC office, but we wanted to make it clear, and that's why I said in the presentation, even though it is sponsored by the Ward Three Democrats and the Ward Four Democrats, this is not a political event, is nonpartisan. Everyone is welcome. We won't be at the door carding you, asking you what your political affiliation is. This is just an opportunity for us to all get together as the community, to come together, to get to know each other. I just became Chair of Ward Three Democrats in January. And one of my initiatives was to stand up our outreach committee, which I was able to do. And part of that is that we're going to try and do one or two outreach events each year, give or take. Once again, not fundraisers, no one will be charged for anything. And this is nonpartisan. There will be no political talk at the event.
Okay, I would just like to point out that that means if we do vote for this and the much smaller Republican Party, the Ward Three and Ward Four Republicans come to us. In fairness sake, we need to approve that too. We prepared to do that?
Absolutely. So the message from Denise, it's not, well, I'll read what Denise said. She said the code simply said, and I basically sent her a copy, Laura, the email saying because they were a democratic organization, if it was in the eligibility guidelines because they're a PAC, and do they meet the grant guidelines per ANC law? She said the code simply says organizations that, and this is quote, organizations that are in public, that are public in nature. We know they did not mean 501Cs as unincorporated organizations are allowed to get grants. The next part of the sentence states, and benefits persons who reside or work within the commission area. And then she says, our focus would be on the nature of the event. Who benefits from it if the expenditures are permissible? And in this case, that the event is absolutely apolitical.
Okay, I just raised the issue.
And there is no candidate support here?
No, there's no candidate support.
That's the other part.
Right, there will be no speeches, we don't have a stage or anything like that. This is just a picnic. We call it a family fun day because we want families to come out, but that's really all it is, is a big picnic.
Commissioner Sherman then Simmons. Bruce, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you for the presentation, Deidra and I. Big supporter of community engagement. Just following up though to Commissioner Goslin's question. Is there nonetheless sort of a derivative benefit for the Ward Three Democrats as a result of this? Kind of a reputational benefit that you hosted this. I'm not opposed to it, mind you. I'm just acknowledging that that would be something that would be of some benefit to your group. No?
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm not going to say this. No, of course, we want people to know that we are open and transparent and inclusive. And this is part of that. That's the whole point of our community outreach task force, is that we need to do more in the community because we haven't been. I mean, just to be honest with you.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Simmons?
I was just gonna say, thank you for coming to the commission about this event, trying to promote more community events that's inclusive and brings the community together. So despite this is being put together by Ward Three Democrats, I was thinking of this as something similar to what the community does for Chevy Chase Day. So I look forward to whenever the event happens with or without the grant.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or questions? Any from the community? Okay. All right. Thank you, Deidra. And like I said, those are all great questions, commissioners. We will make sure, Deidra, I think I just saw you sent the grant application today.
Yeah, I did. I sent it this evening. I sent it on the email chain that came out originally, so if I miss anyone. It should be pretty complete. It also includes the budget request as well.
Okay, so I'll forward that to all the commissioners and schedule for vote. So we'll have, you know, another round. They might look at the grant application and have additional questions. So they'll have up until our next meeting to kind of look at that, and we'll have a vote on it at that next meeting.
Sure, no problem. I'm available if you need questions, or if you need me to attend the next meeting and answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deidra. All right. So next up, we have a presentation by the Executive Administration, Executive Office of the Mayor. Commissioner Nagy, did you have a question for Deidra?
I don't have a question for Deidra, but it occurred to me a while back, but I didn't want to interrupt a bunch of people, that we haven't adopted the minutes from the May 12th meeting yet.
Can we do that in commission business, do you mind?
Nope, I don't mind, but I needed to say that it hadn't happened yet.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You're absolutely right. We told, we, I think I said it, but we got sidetracked on something.
We just do. Yeah, we just kept rolling on. We didn't do it.
Okay, thank you so much. Kendall, you want to raise your hand and come to the top and introduce the presenter on this budget topic?
Yes, I would love.
Is she on?
Yeah, she is on. Betsy, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand, just so we can stay in the reactions.
Let's see. Okay, here we go.
There you go.
And I'm going to send a request to share my screen.
I'm gonna make you co-host.
Okay, great. Hey?
Got it. Okay. And just to, for the commission and community members, pretty much every budget season, we have a representative, usually very high level, from either the mayor or her staff. Sometimes the mayor has come to Three, Four G to do the budget discussion herself. I think I requested her to come, if this is 2020, maybe 2024 budget? And she did a really nice budget presentation. It was really well attended at the community center. So today, we have someone from the council's office, right?
Yes.
General Council's office?
General Council, yes, yes.
General Council, okay. Thank you, Betsy, for coming and doing the presentation for us. And commissioners, if you have anything, I know we didn't do testimony for budget. We normally try to get that in because that's really important to us. I know we're going to have probably some comments on the Civic Corps proposed budget. But Betsy, we're really interested to hear what is in the budget, how things are going to go for us this budget season. Thank you for coming.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here. I am a resident of yours, Chairperson Gore.
I thought.
And so I was glad that as the mayor's general counsel, she deployed me to come to my home ANC meeting. And I want to thank Kendall for running the slides today, and I appreciate your, I appreciate all of the ANC members who really put so much into their public service. And it's not, it goes noticed that you volunteer your time and are so devoted to our community. And so I just am excited to take a few minutes tonight to explain a little bit about some of the priorities and situations surrounding the budget. I do have a copy of the whole budget proposal. It's five volumes. And so I'm going to very humbly say that I haven't read every line of it, and I'm not quite the same level as the mayor. So if you have questions that I can't answer, Kendall and I will get back to you with answers to your specific questions. And while I'm the general counsel to the mayor, I'm speaking as a senior leadership representative. And of course, I'm not a lawyer for the commission or anyone here. I'm not answering, you know, giving legal advice about the budget. So the theme of the budget this year is Grow DC. Next slide. And so 2024 was a real comeback year for the district. We had 28 consecutive balanced budgets, and we have the lowest rate of violent crime in three years. And we had 26 million visitors. And we led the nation in commercial real estate that's like residential, business to residential conversions and so forth. So this slide has a few other nice, nice points, like we had 52 days of cash on hand. Next slide, please. But to build a growth agenda, we had to ask ourselves a few key questions, three key pillars. Does it impact people? Does it create economic activity? And does it attract business? And so we think of them as these, these as drivers that help us fund a progressive set of social services too. You need a growth budget in order to do that. So how do we have a growth budget? Next slide, please. One goal of a growth agenda is to cut red tape and reduce barriers to growth, such as doubling down on business attraction opportunities and strategies and reforming zoning procedures to streamline reviews of new development projects. Some rental act reform, and repealing Initiative 82 and establishing sales tax holidays for restaurants. Next slide, please. The district is very dependent on our federal workforce, and we're trying very hard to diversify our economy to lean in on sports, entertainment, and technology. They've been good drivers so far, and they need to be even stronger, given the challenges we're facing with all the changes to the federal workforce. So the first top agenda item, of course, is bringing the commanders home to DC. And we're transforming the Capital One Arena area. And we hope everyone in this ANC also doesn't think that the downtown area and the Capital One Arena area or Hill East where the commanders will be is something far away. But that's really part and parcel of what makes DC a great city. So next slide, please. So in supporting downtown, we're hosting activations during the Capital One Arena construction. We know construction can be disruptive, but we're going to keep downtown vibrant. And there's a big initiative to launch the Gallery Place Cultural District and the Chinatown Renewal District. And as I mentioned at the, at the top, we really need to keep on going with these new office conversions by expanding the Housing in Downtown program to include Georgetown and the Mount Vernon Triangle. We want to deliver Seventh and Eighth Streets to create Gallery Square and a number of other items that are very important, you know, enhanced, better enhancement on some of the vending that's been a problem, like hibachis out on sidewalks and that kind of thing. And so that's the, next slide, please. That's the gist of some of the downtown. Another pillar is continuing to invest in our schools. There's a solid increase from FY25 to support more than 101,000 DC public and public charter school students. There's a good chunk of money, more than a quarter million dollars, to support pay raises for DCPS and DCPS teachers and school modernizations, continuing the really monumental program that's been going on for years on renovating the schools and improving the schools. There's money in the budget of, I think of some interest in this ANC for more at the MacArthur School, which has been helping to address the overcrowding at Jackson Reed. We're going to continue the high-impact tutoring. And so there's, I think that those are the core, core issues I wanted to touch on, on that slide. Investing in a safe DC is important, too. There's a $30 million increase for MPD to hire more officers and more for safe commercial corridor grants. Critical firefighting gear for the fire and emergency management services and continuing lifesaving pre-hospital blood transfusion programs. There's, we know about some staff stress at the call center at 911 and 311 at the Office of Unified Communication. So there's money to raise the salaries up to $61,000 annually and a million dollars for call taker recruiting and retention efforts. We're continuing with the mobile cameras and license plate readers that can increase safety for major events. And just, we understand, safety is a pillar, just like education is a pillar of a growth budget. Next slide, please. The budget also is investing in a clean DC to support the Clean Corridors Initiative with 80 DPW staff and expanding curbside composting to 12,000 households. I think that's been a popular program up here. And 5.1 million for stormwater management infrastructure, like green roofs, meadows, and medians. The DPW swing shift crew focusing on collection of household trash and recycling, public litter cans and bulk trash pickup. Vending enforced, Department of Licensing and Consumer Protection Vending Enforcement Team to work nights and weekends, especially for the large special events downtown. A nuisance abatement fund and purchase of new heavy medium and light duty vehicles for the Department of Public Works to improve trash recycling collection and snow plowing. The housing and economic development is always important, too. The Housing Production Trust Fund is back at $100 million for FY26 in the mayor's proposed budget. And there's money to continue the heirs property program. That's to make sure that families don't lose access to the wealth that's embedded in their homes when people die intestate and to help families get that, the value of that property unlocked. There's $23 million for H Pap, the Home Purchase Assistance Program, and 52.4 million to support the Housing Authority Public Housing Improvements. There's a lot of money for the New Communities Program. And then other economic development programs are relating to the arts. National Theater, Lincoln Theater, Howard Theater, Fletcher Johnson Infrastructure Site Improvements. East Capitol Gateway Grocery Infrastructure. The Hill East and St. Eze has continued to be priorities. And $820,000 to support the America 250 Celebration through planning and engagement. So then we're doing the ground, the utilities and infrastructure at the RFK Campus where the new stadium will be, assuming that's approved. Next slide, please. Libraries and rec centers. The Chevy Chase Library is one of the two citywide that hasn't been renovated recently. So there's money both for the library renovation and the community center presentation. And I'm sorry, I said presentation. So there's money both for the libraries and the rec center renovation, not presentation. And I think that that's one of the key issues of interest here. There's this new sportsplex as part of the RFK Campus Plan that'll allow for indoor track, gymnastics, cheer, that kind of thing. People right now go out to Prince George's County at the Sports and Learning Complex. And it'll be nice to have some of those facilities at a sportsplex here in the city. And that'll be a very nice amenity for the city if that gets passed as part of the capital budget. There's $400,000 for stipends to the Department of Parks and Rec Volunteer Coaches to offset their transportation time and other out-of-pocket expenses they incur with their volunteer coaching. So we want to support our, our community helpers there. Next slide. So that, that's a high level, and you can learn more at budget.dc.gov. Thank you. So I know we're starting to run over time already because I was scheduled to go till 7:40, I think. But I think I got a little bit of a late start. So I'm happy to answer, answer questions. So I'm happy to answer, answer questions, but that's a high-level look at some of the priorities and, um, what went into it. Uh, anyway, happy to take questions.
All right, we'll start with commissioners, Commissioner Sherman, then Nagy.
Betsy, thank you for the presentation. I want to, um, commend, uh, the mayor and the budget for including funding for the pre-K enhancement and expansion program, the P Keep. Several of my constituents, when they heard that that program was in jeopardy, contacted me. Uh, we did, um, prepare a resolution which this commission approved, uh, and sent that on. And so we're very pleased to see that, in fact, that program is being supported. Uh, that is a program that, uh, were not in place, might result in some of the families in my district having to, of course, fund privately access to pre-K education that runs upwards in the District of Columbia of twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars per child per year. So it's quite an outlay for people. So, uh, I want to acknowledge that you have included that, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll bring all your comments back with Kendall's help. And, um, yeah, there were so, there was so much tension during the buildup and the decisions because, you know, it's a, there are so many hard choices to be made, and we heard from the community loud and clear. And, um, I had my kids were young at a time when we didn't have anything like pre-K three. And it's a, it's a wonderful way of attracting and keeping families in the district. It's, you're, you're right, and your constituents are right, that it's a very high-cost item. And there've been some really interesting studies about how, um, the District of Columbia's women have done better in their jobs than women nationwide because, maybe because they're being able to continue with careers, um, because we have good childcare availability at different, um, in, income levels or for, or for free.
Wow, all right. Um, Commissioner Nagy, then Goslin.
Thank you. Um, this is, I have actually a couple of points. Um, I'm going to start with the Lafayette Field because, um, we've been asking for quite some time to fix the sod. As in the ANC, we've been asking to fix the sod, the grass field at Lafayette. So when, when we hear that the city's going to spend so much money on the commanders and other initiatives, there are nine hundred plus children who use the field at Lafayette. We'd love to see some of that money coming our way so that we could fix the field. And my second point, and thank you very much for your presentation, I did attend the mayor's budget meeting. So this is my second run-through, plus the time I spent looking at it online. Um, but my, my second question is, um, I think you said a hundred and sixty-six million for libraries is what's allocated. So, uh, by my reckoning, that's twenty-seven million per library, but we're not getting anywhere near that for the Chevy Chase Library.
Oh, I think that you have to look at the capital budget as, as well as the operating budget. So, um, on the capital side, um, let me tell you what the number is. The library has twenty-three point five six in the budget. Um, for the, for the Chevy Chase Library.
Okay, that's, but that's still four short of twenty-seven million, yes? Did you not hear me? Sorry, it's still four million short of, uh, twenty-seven million. So there's a, there's a four million dollar-ish delta, three and a half. It's, I don't know, I'm not understanding it, but maybe we can talk about this later.
I'm not positive I can, I can, let's see.
There's a shortfall on the community side. So I'm not sure, um, Commissioner Nagy, if you're speaking about the, uh, Community Center or Library. The Community Center has a four point seven million, um, shortfall in the FY twenty-six budget comparative to what was requested, nineteen point five million, um, since the FY nineteen budget. Um, yeah, but I think, because I was going to bring that issue up as well. What I was going to request is that, um, we have someone from DMPED along with the mayor's office to really explain what's going on with the budget for the Community Center. And Betsy, I don't think you can do that for us here because I have, uh, four pages of talking points on that, but I do.
I can take talking points, your talking points back, the feedback back. And you can definitely request, um, Daniel Lyons is the key point person. I think he, he's familiar to you. Um, he could come, the library is in at twenty-three point five six nine and the Community Center at fourteen point seven nine six for a total of thirty-eight point three six.
Right. And the real concern, I mean, you know, the concern with the Community Center, the ANC has raised, and, um, I have to give a shout out to former chairperson Randy Speck, who did a tremendously strong personal testimony on this issue. Um, but, you know, I, I, in my single-member district capacity, stand fully behind his personal testimony because he points out the lengths that the ANC has gone to, to, to fight for that, you know, understanding of the budget in terms of this project. Um, and it definitely is a little concerning to see the shortfall of, you know, that four point seven and, and trying to understand, is that gonna, how that's going to impact the project? Because the developers that bid it on this project bid on that nineteen point five. Um, and the proposed budget, you know, shortfall's at four point seven. So we need to kind of understand from the administration how that's going to potentially impact the project. And I say that with the caveat, which I think is important to say, that the community is undergoing right now a survey process to get feedback on the project. Um, so we're, we are kind of talking about it from the standpoint, you know, of going forward. But we're going to share that feedback with the executive office so that they fully understand the community's perspective on it.
Right.
But in the meantime, um, since the budget is, you know, dead smack in front of us right now, that is something that we truly, truly have to understand because the development team is going to have to make that shortfall up somewhere.
Right.
Um, and it's either going to come in the sacrifice of housing or the sacrifice of the Community Center. And I can pretty much tell you where this community is going to come out on that. So it's going to be really important for us to work with the administration, um, you know, to make sure that the community fully understands where the project falls within this budget perspective. So I'll, I'll leave it there for my part and, um, defer to other commissioners. Thank you, Betsy. Um, Commissioner Goslin, and thank you, Commissioner Nagy. Let me go back to Commissioner Nagy. Did, did you get everything in that you wanted to say?
Thank you, thank you so much. I have a tiny little question. I see that Commissioner Simmons put in the chat that the library shortfall is point six four and the Community Center is four point seven. Does that mean that, in your view, Commissioner Simmons, the library shortfall is six hundred thousand for sixty, six thousand, six hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so the original was twenty-four point two and Betsy mentioned twenty-three point five six.
Yeah, but that actually wasn't my point. My point was that if you divide up the, the hundred and sixty-six million, but thank you, I appreciate your point, but it wasn't my point. My point is a hundred and sixty-six million divided by the number of libraries, six libraries comes out to twenty-seven million. So we should be getting more for our library, not, no, no, more, not less, and not even six hundred thousand dollars less. So I just wanted to clarify that because it's in the chat and I just wanted.
My chat was just the difference, we were talking about the shortfall.
Right, I view the short, I view the shortfall as four million dollars almost, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, I, 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 I don't think that every project is allocated the same amount of money because the money is allocated based upon need. So I can look into exactly what the government is spending on these renovations and investments into different communities. But I think that, uh, Chevy Chase Library, what it will be getting could be more than what other renovations are getting because of the scale of the renovation. I think it's, I think the money is allocated to scale instead of allocated evenly throughout.
Okay, well, maybe you, thank you. And if you'll get back to us, that would be wonderful. Thanks, Kendall.
Happy to.
Thanks, I know, thank you very much.
Um, Commissioner Goslin, then Finacy.
So let me, uh, come in behind Lisa's points and, uh, uh, and, and Liz's. Um, what is especially, and I, I, Betsy, I understand you're doing a high-level presentation, but to both of you, I hope you carry back the message from this ANC and this community. We have been deeply involved in the budgeting and the presentation of both of these projects, the Community Center and the library. Not only is the number in the mayor's proposed budget about five million short of where we were, but the fact is that DPR has given a description, well, there is a description in the mayor's budget, we presume to come from DPR, which is utterly confusing. It suggests a version of this project that was extant in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, but has been superseded and that DPR knows has been superseded. We're talking about a new building. The way the mayor's budget describes this, you would think you were gonna, you know, put the, the molding back up on the, you were, you were going to do repairs to the, the existing building. My worry is that DPR either was sloppy in telling the mayor about this project and exhumed some old account of it. Um, uh, or the, maybe the mayor has changed her tune on this and doesn't want to build a new Community Center and just wants to renovate the old one, which she ought to let the, the developers know about if that's where she's going with this one. So it's a, it hits, this, this confusion hits at a particularly bad time. Um, not just for us trying to talk to the community about what might or might not happen at this site, but for the eight development teams that have, um, that have made presentations presuming new construction for a library and new construction for a Community Center.
I, I think it's fair to say we're still on track to go with the new construction and that solicitation of proposals wasn't in bad faith. And I, I bet you're right that it, they might have taken old language. Um, so as I understand the timeline, the public comments closed May twenty-eighth, I believe, and you all got an extension for the ANC to weigh in by July tenth, um, on those, um, proposals. And that's one track. And then the DMPED will be releasing, um, the public comments and it's, that's, that disposition, land disposition is already in front of council and they will digest the comments. All the comments are part of the public record and your survey, which is still open, will become part of the public record. So that's one track, and then the other track is the budget. And the budget has some money that's interacting with that other process.
Yeah, because when I hope the, the other track is you carrying the message back to the budgeters, the mayor's budgeters saying, you may ought to take another look at how this is described and how this is funded, but how this is described in the mayor's budget. I just think, I think you're off by a mile there, so, um.
Okay, thank you for the feedback, and we are definitely taking comments back. That's the community engagement.
I knew those, I, I, thank you.
Commissioner Finacy, then Grunwald.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback up on, uh, Commissioner Nagy's comment about Lafayette Field. It's in my district. Um, and you may or may not know that that field has been sorely neglected for the last eight years. I don't think it's had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, in funding over the last ten years. It was taken off the maintenance contract three times. It has not been air-rated or re-seated in eight years. It hasn't been watered in the last six. And the mayor is not allocating any money to fix it. She doesn't want the grass. We want the grass, our ANC has passed resolutions, we have a parent petition on it. And there is money because we have money for the, uh, rehabilitation of the upper field, which was supposed to have been done in twenty sixteen, according to a presentation that DGS made to the National Capitol Planning Commission. They promised to rehab it after the degradation to the park after the school, uh, renovation. They never did, but they're finally getting around to it. And if they do a light touch, some of that one point nine million that is in the budget could be allocated. Sod costs about three dollars a square foot, Lafayette is five, fifty thousand square feet. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's not a lot of money for nine hundred kids every day compared to a five hundred million dollar stadium for eight games a year. Um, we have a pocket park at the Ward Three, Ward Four Construction Update, the most recent one. They have a pocket park at Ninth and Illinois. It's getting a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to redo a thirty-three hundred square foot pocket park. I don't know how many people are going to visit a park that is half the size of a standard lot every day, but I guarantee you won't be anything close to the nine hundred kids that use the Lafayette Field. And it's just, try not to curse here, it's just a shame that we can't see a way to come to yes and give us the grass field that everybody in this community, that, that, you know, when we've had like a vo, uh, a vote or anything, it's come out in favor of grass. We have an MOU in favor of grass. Um, and we're still not getting it, and so much money is being spent on other things. It's, it's just really a shame. And the money is there from the upper field, so you don't even have to go anywhere. And we've also had offers from Smart Surfaces Coalition to work with us. And also there's a Pepco, um, grant process that's open until July for sustainable funding. So there's funding that's open, we just have to get permission to do it and get the okay to go forward, so.
Thanks, I'll bring that back.
And Betsy, we did, um, myself and, um, Commissioner Finacy and Kendall was there, had, um, a meeting with the mayor and, um, Director Hunter, um, Deputy Mayor of Education, Kine, was present where Commissioner Finacy raised a lot of these, um, points. Um, so she's very, very well aware, and you can see Commissioner Finacy is very passionate about this, and she was very passionate with the mayor in advocating for this. So that would be something that we would hope that you, again, would take back to her, um, to let her know.
Yep, will do.
All right, Commissioner Grunwald, then Nagy.
Yes, hi, I, Lisa, I would just like to remind us that we are late for our next presentation and my, my guest, um, D dot, uh, our, our D dot representative needs to leave at eight-thirty and after eight now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nagy.
I will make this really quick. Um, you mentioned that the comments, um, about the civic, um, foresight are, are public and that people will be, be able to access them. I have millions of people asking me where to access them. Can you help me find that?
We'll get back to you. I don't know if it's all released now, but it goes into the legislative record. So we'll, I'll, I'll get you the, the link when it's released, okay?
Okay, thanks. By, by legislative record, you mean when the council votes on the project or before that?
That land, on the disposition, so.
On the surplusing of the site?
Surplusing and disposition, mhm.
Okay, thank you, I, I appreciate it. Um, I'll get your email address and I'll send you mine.
Okay.
Maybe you can send it to the entire commission, that would be great.
Through Kendall, we'll get it, we'll get you, we'll get you that link when it's available.
I just wanted, I, yeah, I just wanted to add that the, the public comments on that are not publicly, and they more than likely will be on the project site where DMPED has been placing all the information related to this project. And since, um, just one last thing, I just wanted to follow up with Betsy. Um, there has been, um, constituents in my single-member district consistently asking about the civic corps and the timeline, and this is from DMPED, that, you know, the timeline has not changed from the disposition hearing and all the other, um, times that they have came out. So, um, if and when a selection is made, it then goes to the legislative package for the council to vote on. So, um, and then, you know, DMPED and all the other DC government bodies will have more public engagement with the community on the site.
Yes, good point, lots of opportunities for engagement. So thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so with that, Betsy and Kendall, thank you so much. Really great presentation and, um, I'm glad, really thankful, um, that the commissioners had an opportunity to get their concerns. that the commissioners had an opportunity to get their concerns and budget priorities to the executive office. We didn't have the mayor, but you are a stand-in for sure. So thank you. And we'll be in touch because a lot of the things that they raised, I do think we need to follow up on. So Kendall, hopefully you'll stay in touch and we can get this back on our agenda at some point in time to get some of these things addressed.
Yeah, of course, I'm at your service. And for people in the chat, I put my email at 7:03 in the chat. So if you have any other outstanding questions regarding the budget, I'm happy to follow up with you. But thank you, Betsy, and thank you all for your time. You've been very generous.
No problem. Thanks again, Betsy. Okay, so with that, Commissioner Grunwald.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. I have an item from my SMD 03 to present tonight. And I'd just like to welcome onboard here Christine Mayer. She's with DDOT's multimodal safety engineering team. She's here tonight.
Can you have her, Christine, hang on a minute, Carol. Christine, can you raise your hand, use the raise your hand function so you move to the top of the screen? Anyone from DDOT on this topic? Thank you.
And I'd also like to welcome my neighbors and friends, Anne Wieland Seides and her husband, Dr. Stuart Seides, Pam Meyer and Chris Carey. These are all residents of 27th Street between Military and Broad Branch Road. So in April, our ANC received a DDOT notice of intent to remove the right turn slip lane on Broad Branch Road at its intersection with 27th Street and improve signage. And it's, it's my understanding, having spoken to Ms. Mayer and the mayors and the Ms. Mayer and the neighbors at length, that the changes have been proposed by DDOT's multimodal safety engineering team because that this intersection was the scene of an accident in which someone was seriously injured. And in 2024, a bicyclist who was traveling south on Broad Branch Road lost control of his or her bike, went over a guard rail at the 27th Street and Broad Branch intersection, was thrown into Rock Creek Park, I'm sorry, Rock Creek, Rock Creek, and was seriously injured. No other vehicles, bikes or pedestrians were involved. It was a single operator accident. And DDOT, through Ms. Mayer, acknowledges that the right turn slip lane on Broad Branch appears to have had nothing to do with the bicycle accident. But DDOT intends to remove the slip lane because the agency is required to take action to improve safety near the scene of a bad accident. At the same time, the residents of 27th Street between Military and Broad Branch have been activating for about two and a half years for major safety or traffic calming on their street. They have noticed, noted that their block is a dangerously steep, narrow and winding road, that especially since the closure of Upper Beach Drive in Rock Creek Park has become a major thoroughfare for commuters and others who come from the north seeking access to Rock Creek Parkway and downtown. And their little street was never intended to carry hundreds of vehicles per day. These residents have been complaining that their block has become a speedway and have been campaigning nonstop for about two and a half years to have traffic calming measures installed along the block. On November 1, 2023, these residents submitted their first petition, signed by every household on the block, and they submitted it to DDOT, then ANC Commissioner Jim Nash and Ward Four Councilmember Janice Lewis George, demanding traffic calming. But in the two and a half years that have elapsed, nothing has been done. So the residents, when we got notice that DDOT wanted to remove the slip lane at the intersection of 27th and Broad Branch, the residents found that this would be a good opportunity to also lobby again for themselves to get traffic calming for this block. The residents of this block unanimously and vociferously insist that speeding, not the right turn slip lane, is a safety issue at the intersection and on the block. And they believe that removing the slip lane would be utterly ineffective as a safety measure. Therefore, they unanimously oppose removal of the slip lane and instead are requesting traffic calming on their block. So these residents have submitted a second petition to DDOT, signed by every household on the block, asking that this right turn slip lane not be removed and asking instead for immediate traffic calming measures on the block. I submitted the second petition to the ANC and the neighbors have submitted it to DDOT. The residents of this block assert that merely going out to retrieve mail from their mailboxes, putting their trash bins at the ends of their driveways on collection day, picking up litter from the street or driving their cars out of their driveways puts their lives in immediate danger from vehicles and bikes speeding up and down their block. And I might add that this block is far too dangerous for anyone to attempt to walk along it. In addition, delivery vehicles often park and block one side of the street so that drivers must pass them on a blind, steep curve, which is an extremely dangerous situation. There have been several motor vehicle accidents here and bike accidents on this block at all times of year and all kinds of weather, including one in which a car greened off the road down into a deep ditch in Rock Creek, Rock Creek Park, and others in which residents retaining walls were hit and damaged and a collision caused by a driver heedless of a blind driveway sign and several close calls. So the residents and I got together and contacted DDOT. We met with Christine Mayer on May 20th onsite. And we were extremely impressed by Ms. Mayer, by her depth of knowledge and her real concern for safety in our neighborhood. We really appreciated that. She was really, really knowledgeable and really helpful. And the neighbors and I and Ms. Mayer put forth a list of things that we think would very much improve matters on this street in terms of safety, of traffic calming. And we were able to get an agreement from Ms. Mayer that some of these things could indeed be provided. And I've listed them in my resolution. Speed testing with a written report sent to the neighbors and the ANC, installation of speed feedback signs at the top and bottom of the block, installation of two blind driveway signs and installation of two speed limit signs. And the neighbors have also requested two low profile speed cameras, one to catch ascending drivers and one for descending drivers as soon as possible. Ms. Mayer explained to us all that probably the most she could get would be one camera, but at the moment, all the cameras are taken up elsewhere in the community at the moment. But she thought she could make it a priority when one of the cameras was, did become available to put it on this block. So, so just to reiterate just quickly, the residents would really, really like to retain the slip lane and instead have traffic calming on their block. And the reason they oppose the removal of the slip lane, they believe that the slip lane is irrelevant to safety. They believe that it's, that the street speed is, should be the priority. And they don't understand why we would want to expend funds that are not going to improve safety. And they also believe that removing the slip lane would cause traffic backups. So I would like to ask maybe Ms. Mayer, since she needs to leave at 8:30, I don't know who I should ask to speak first, the neighbors or Ms. Mayer?
Actually, actually, the commissioners need to speak on the resolution, but I would ask that maybe let Ms. Mayer proceed in her discussion of the safety recommendations and the slip lane. Because she has to leave.
Sure. Thank you, everyone, and thanks Commissioner Grunwald for inviting me. So when we looked at the dynamics of the crash, it, because it was a single bicycle that happened overnight, we didn't have any video, MPD doesn't have any video of this particular crash, as they might typically in a more urbanized area, you'd have somebody's Ring camera or so on. So we were going on what we had discussed with the MPD officers who were responding to the area and what they learned later after the person who was injured gained consciousness again. And so after following back up with MPD, we believe that he was trying to make kind of a right turn to continue down 27th, heading southbound from Broad Branch down south to 27th. I can't confirm that. They, they are still kind of working these things out. But regardless, we've heard the neighbors on 27th and also on Broad Branch. So we are going to focus our treatments on more signage and more awareness-related treatments so that people know the speed limits. They're aware when they're exceeding the speed limits and can, and can follow them. We, like I said, won't be able to install a camera immediately, but you all will go into the queue for, for that prioritization.
Let me, I have a question. Commissioners, raise your hands if you have questions for her. But one of the questions I have, Ms. Mayer, in your notice of intent, you mentioned a fatality. Was there a fatality at this site?
No, it turned out it was just a serious injury. That was just a typo.
Wow, that's a major typo.
Yeah, originally, we thought that the injuries were very critical. So we apologize. It was just a serious injury. Thankfully, that person has recovered or is recovering.
Can you all correct that notice of intent? Or make an appeal to it? I mean, I, I, that is a major typo. Okay.
Sure.
And my other question, because I was extremely confused. I mean, if you look at our resolution and you look at the notice of intent, that is a huge discrepancy. But the other question I wanted to ask, what is the agency's stance on a slip lane? Are you saying that, well, a couple of things. Does the community have a TSI for the recommendations in place? Is there any TSI that's been submitted for this area? Sorry, my camera's acting funny.
I believe there may have been some, but regardless, because we're focusing on the area, we're looking at these, at the TSIs and the comments that we've already gotten for these.
So you don't need a TSI from them?
No, because we're focusing on this because of the serious injury.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Sherman then Goslin.
Yeah, and Kristin, thank you very much for your attention to this and thanks to the neighbors that are in my colleague Commissioner Grunwald's district for your participation, speaking out, speaking up about what your needs are and your concerns. This is, I think, the epitome of what an ANC is about. That is to say, there's an issue at hand, the neighbors express their concerns, the commissioner is attentive to those concerns, engages the city, the city listens. And in my experience, and I just want to say, I, and I was on a slip lane project at Tennessee in Utah that was successfully completed because of safety concerns. And there was very close collaboration then with the neighbors. So I've directly experienced one of these projects myself before. And I just want to salute DDOT for your willingness to listen, be flexible. And in this particular case, shift gears entirely and focus on another set of concerns, not the one that you came in with. So I just want to, my hat's off to you and my hat's off to my colleague Commissioner Grunwald for her work. And again, I want to salute all the neighbors on the call for your efforts to speak up about your needs. So thank you.
Mr. Goslin?
Yeah, let me say, I'm pleased you're here, Kristin and I, because this for me, and I think for many of the other commissioners, is a sort of matter of initial presentation. Although the neighbors apparently have had these problems and God only knows, having walked down that street, I mean, I have great sympathy for you. That is a scary. But, but what confused, since, since, although the draft resolution talks about petitions going back several years, in my near five years on the commission, I don't remember this coming before us. In addition, the draft, as it now stands, has the, has both the residents and then by inference, if we vote for this, us making all sorts of demands where if I do understand my colleague Carol Grunwald's comments and yours, you, DDOT has already agreed to most of these things. And where there is a disagreement, where there is some difference between the ask and the get is on when we get cameras and whether they're going for both ascending and descending. So just so before you, you, you leave us, do we have, has DDOT committed to the list that, that Carol has in her draft, her draft resolution minus when the cameras are there? The two low profile speed, low profile speed cameras? That is, speed testing with a written report sent to neighbors in the ANC with a three-month turnaround time, installation of speed feedback signs at the top and bottom of the block, installation of two blind driveway signs, installation of two speed limit signs. And then we could have the request for the, for the cameras. Have you agreed to that?
Yes, we have. I think what is helpful, though, is to clarify the ANC's position on the NOI that was issued. And we will also, just, just to tie up the loose end on the, the serious injury, we'll mimic those similar treatments on Broad Branch as well, just so the speed on both of those approaches is lowered.
Okay, well, so in, it feels to me like we have an agreement here and we should just do the safety for 27th Street. What's, I'm, what I'm lost about, so if you need, if DDOT needs from us a resolution that says, we'd like all these things and we hear the neighbors, that seems fine. What I'm confused about is, well, you've answered one confusion, which is that you've already agreed to all this stuff except for the speed cameras and we can include in a resolution, we'd like the speed cameras for up and down. What's that got to do with the slip lane? Well, I mean, I can understand why it pissed off neighbors that, you know, DDOT would come along and say, let's do something with, you know, on a very nearby street that has nothing to do with the safety of this corkscrew street coming down into the, but what, I mean, if you need the ANC to say, we're for traffic calming on 27th Street, I think we could say that with no problem at all. We're, I think several of us are pretty confused about the, about, well, we're confused about two things. We're confused about the whole slip lane issue. What's that got to do with traffic calming on 27th Street? And if you, I think the other thing is simply a rhetorical thing, which is if DDOT has agreed to all this stuff, why are we using language like vociferously insist and demand and oppose? I mean, why can't we just say, the ANC backs traffic calming measures, these traffic calming measures, plus we ask, we support the residents on these, this additional ask of cameras? End of resolution. Doesn't that do the trick? What's, what's the, what's the slip lane got to do with it? I guess I'd ask either Carol or.
Well, my, so that's my question too. And Christine just said that you need, you needed, that you want comments from the ANC on the NOI, which is about the slip lane, right?
That's correct, yes. To be able to support us not moving forward with the slip lane closure, but instead focusing on speed calming on 27th and Broad Branch as the approaches.
All right.
Okay, so I believe it's time to talk to the neighbors, who are the ones who are opposed to the removal of the slip lane.
We can do that, but I haven't. Let me go to Commissioner Goslin.
Just, Carol, one more thing to Christine. Could I just ask her one more question because we're going to lose her momentarily? And I, so, so DDOT feels it has to have something from the ANC that says, don't do the slip lane, do, do 27th Street. Is that what you're telling me? don't do the slip lane, do 27th Street. Is that what you're telling me?
This was the request of Ms. Mayor. She asked me to reinforce the neighbors' requests with an ANC resolution. And that's what I've submitted to the ANC.
Yes. So ANC resolutions, we have to consider with great weight. And so that helps me support this as I'm taking the issue to my chief and my director to make that decision and finalize.
Oh, in other words, D-Dot's process, your process, requires to wire these two things together for the purpose of moving this forward. I mean, because I think a lot of us on this commissioner kind of lost, like, we got a slip lane down on Broad Branch. We've got neighbors who are rightly upset about traffic on 27th. And somehow the two things don't seem to be totally separate issues. But what you're saying to us is you need, for your bureaucratic purposes, to have these wired together. Us say, don't bother with the slip lane, do 27th Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, fine. I mean, fine, you know.
Let me.
Go ahead.
Let me add, then Commissioner Sherman. Ms. Mayor, I'm really interested in why D-Dot thought you needed to remove the slip lane? And why, what did the engineer say? There's been no reporting to the ANC on, and I understand the community's sentiment about their feeling. But I want to understand why D-Dot thought it was important to remove the slip lane? And is that concern no longer there? Can you tell me a little bit about how that process went down? And was it as, you know, kind of stated that because there was a serious accident there, something needed to be done by D-Dot? Is it a righteous recommendation? Is it, you know, I mean, is it a dangerous, you know, slip lane? What's going on here from D-Dot's perspective?
Yeah, so when we looked and learned about the dynamics of that crash and looked at the intersection where it occurred, we didn't tend to look upstream. That's part of a kind of bigger area study. But, but we did expand after hearing from the neighbors about the concerns upstream. But in looking at that location specifically, we found that it was, it could be challenging sightlines at times, especially if you have someone stopped in the through lane and someone is also trying to make that right turn. So there may be visibility challenges that could, especially if someone is coming down Broad Branch at a slightly higher rate of speed, that could cause crashes, rear ends and things. But if we're able to manage the speeds as people are approaching that intersection, then we can monitor conditions and see if, in the future, if that is actually necessary. So if we see reductions in speeds and all is successful and we don't see any further crashes, then I think we're good. But if we do see further crashes at the location, we may want to revisit at some point in the future.
Okay. I would think your comment would be important to add to the resolution because it is a safety issue. And if you're basically telling the ANC at this point in time that you're willing, you know, you're willing to go with those safety improvements first and see how that works on that roadway. Because the one thing I would caution the ANC is tying ourselves to a decision that if D-Dot still saw this as some, in some way, shape or form or fashion, a safety issue. But if you're kind of taking that off the table, I think it's important for us as ANC to add that into the resolution. Commissioner Sherman, then Grunwald.
Yeah, I was just going to say that this seems to me to be one of these occasions where we take yes for an answer and move on. I think we've, I think we've got the answer here that we need, that we've, we're honoring our neighbors' concerns and we've worked this issue in advance to the point where I think we have the cooperation we want from D-Dot. And I think everybody wins on this.
Yeah, I just think, Bruce, not everybody understood the process.
I for one, I for one wasn't confused, but that I understand if there was.
Well, good for you, and I'll give you a cookie, but there were other.
No, it's not a question of, it's not a question of having a cookie. I think Commissioner Grunwald had laid it out very clearly in what she wrote. I understood it, but that's fine if there needed to be these further questions. But I think.
The commission, you can hear for yourself, you have fellow commissioners that are confused. So what else are we supposed to do? But clarify.
Right, and then I think we're clarified now, right?
I am, after talking to the D-Dot rep, yes. Commissioner Grunwald, then Finacy.
Oh, I'm good. I'd like the, after the commissioners are done, I'd love the neighbors to speak. Thank you.
Absolutely, that's the process. Commissioner Finacy?
Yeah, I just put this in the chat in case Christine had to go. But just kind of going forward, my concern is that D-Dot seems reactive rather than proactive. They seem to use an algorithm that waits past accidents rather than looking at neighborhood input on potential dangerous sites. And I saw this in my previous neighborhood where we had to wait for a lady to get killed at a hit and run before we could get the speed cameras we had been asking for. We've got another intersection now that I know of that is, people are unhappy about it. And so I'd just like to see maybe D-Dot consider taking ANC input, maybe like one dangerous place a quarter, and considering looking at that and not just using the algorithm. Thank you.
Commissioners Simmons, and then Goslin, then we need to go to community.
Hi, yes, I just want to say thank you to D-Dot for being here and addressing this concern. I just want to let the community know, shameless plug, that Commissioner Goslin and I will be hosting a community meeting on June 25th at 7:00 PM. I know we have the Connecticut inligation crosswalk issue that a lot of residents in my single-member district have complained about. You're about nearly going to lose your life crossing Connecticut inligation. So if the community members still want to talk about D-Dot and transportation issues, please join Commissioner Goslin and I again on the 25th, 7:00 PM. You should be able to check the website. Bruce, if you could put the link on the website, that would be great to join our meeting, 7:00 to 8:00. Thanks.
And Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah. This is addressed to Carol. When you put this resolution on the floor, I'd like you to consider a friendly amendment that takes some of the combative language out of this and just says, there was, there was a petition in 2023. There was a petition this year. There were meetings with neighbors and with you, Commissioner Grunwald. D-Dot, in the person of Christine Mayer, agreed to these things. The community, the neighbors with, and the ANC supporting them believe that also need to be speed cameras going both ways. I think that captures where, and to meet Commissioner Gore's request that we quote Christine Mayer as saying that you are prepared because now you have different information about the nature of the accident at the intersection of 27th and Broad Branch to recede on that. But you will keep studying whether that's a dangerous intersection. So it's not on us, it's on you. Would you, Commissioner Grunwald, consider that?
Sure, that's fine. I, after I heard from you earlier today, I went through my resolution and found one word, demand, one in the whole resolution, but I'm happy to take that out. The rest were asks, but that's fine. And just as long as this issue gets solved and the neighbors are taken care of, I don't care what the words say in the, in the resolution, just as long as it happens. So if you'd like to trim my language or tone it down or remove that one word of demand, that's fine with me. And I just also like to point out that I did pass my draft resolution along to Ms. Mayor to see if she had any problem with it before I said it to y'all. And she had no problem with it. So I'm just, you know.
But you remember, it's a case of first impression for us, so, or at least for me. I mean, so, okay, so, I mean, I'm, just when we get to the voting, I'm prepared to vote for the concept if you and I could work on some of the language. And opposes one, demand is one, and vociferous. I mean, we just don't, if D-Dot is agreeing to this stuff, let's, let's give them the benefit of the doubt. I mean, you know, and, and we need to get, and we need to get Lisa's concern in. So with that, I'm happy to turn to the community. I just, I, you know, I just, I'm trying to get myself to yes here, so.
I wanted to add one more thing before we move on.
Hang on. Commissioner Simmons? Yeah. Okay, Ms. Commissioner Goslin, were you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons?
So I just wanted to add in on Peter's point that if we could tone it down in the resolution, that would be good. And then also just formatting, there's some words that are bold, like a letter bolded that in the rest of the letters isn't bolded. And then also, the resolution talks about the petition being attached and is not attached. So if we're going to add the petition from the residents that we added as an appendix, because it's reading as an email, like it's attached below, but it wasn't attached. Those are the only things that I would just add to fix it in the resolution.
Let's get to the residents and then vote, get this on the floor and vote. I mean, Bruce's point is right. We can get to yes here.
So community members, if you want to add anything to the discussion, please raise your hand.
Kitty, Nancy? You're on mute.
Kitty, you're on mute.
Why don't you talk?
I can, I can speak maybe first while Kitty. I'm Ann Wylansides. Thanks very much for hearing us this evening. Thanks for all your comments. Much appreciated. Carol Grunwald did a, I think, exceptional job of articulating our issues and our proposed solutions and so on. So I don't want to be redundant, but just to summarize the position, it is that the safety issue resides on 27th Street. There is no safety issue at the intersection. Five stop signs. And that merge lane is really helpful, actually, to move the traffic through. And we're not, we're, you know, we're in and out of that intersection constantly, as you would guess. It's the only way, practically the only way out of the street. So the safety issue is on the street, is the speed of the drivers. It is dangerous because of the speed that is not managed. So we, we think cameras would be a great solution. We think studying the speed is, of course, the first way to get there. But a couple of cameras shouldn't be that big of an expense, and far less of an expense, by the way, than revising the the merge lane down below. Kitty, you want to say something?
I think, am I off mute now?
Yes.
Yay. I, first of all, want to applaud you all for caring and giving your time. I had no idea how tedious this is for all of you. My gosh, applause to you. You guys are great. Also, your common sense is wonderful. Really quickly, we live on a Speedway. This 27th Street was not intended to be a major commuter artery with the closing down in the park of whatever that road is, Beach Drive. I mean, we have cars coming up here at 50 to 60 miles an hour and going down. Not everybody, of course. We've had accidents here with cars going off the road. We live at the last house before the bridge and the first house as you come up the hill. We've lived here for 18 years. It is like, if I could record for you, the exhaust, there's a Porsche that goes by every night at about 60 or 70, kids have been jumping off the road. Lastly, I'll just say, I mean, this is a major speed problem on a street that wasn't meant to be, a very narrow, tricky street. And I don't know why DOT didn't record the cars slipping off into the woods in front of our house on an icy road, at least two, and in front of the Gillespie's up the street going off the road. And for me, the slip lane is a traffic calming measure. Why? Have you ever been at a three- or four-way stop sign when everybody's trying to decide who goes first? This way, the slip lane, if you're coming along Broad Branch on the right, there's a stop sign, but you can more easily decide when it's your turn to come into traffic without dealing with the weasels who try to go through the light, the stop signs blowing through. It's a calming measure to have different stop signs and look, stop, look and listen. I don't want to, anyway, that's it. I think the slip lane is not the issue. I agree. Peter, you've been fantastic. You all have been so commonsensical, and I'm done. Thank you.
Ms. Nancy, thank you for coming on. I've passed your house the past, since I've been living in this neighborhood in 2000.
Really?
Yes, it's really great to put a face to that house. I know it well.
Come on and shovel with us this winter. Come and shovel the driveway with us.
But you've also kind of convinced me not to take 27th Street. You know, I'll find a detour. You guys got enough traffic going through there.
Well, I'm sure you obey the speed limit.
I do. I have a, I have a large vehicle, so I certainly, definitely coming down that road.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. So nice to meet you both.
Carol, anybody else?
That's it.
Okay, you want to put it on the floor?
Yep, I'd like to move that my resolution be adopted so that the neighbors of 27th Street can be helped. They can have traffic calming and so that D-Dot can decide, you know, to help these folks.
I'll second that.
But before we do, the proper is a point of order. Moved as amended. You were offered friendly amendment, so the motion has to be moved as amended.
Okay, how is that, how, how is this language going to be? Who is going to be responsible for, the offensive word in my, in my.
Why don't you and I work out the language? I've said, all I'm trying to do is change tone, not substance.
I see.
So, I mean, I think, I think we can come to an agreement on that easily. I, as I say, I have an early appointment at the hospital, but I will.
I have an earlier appointment at the hospital tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
So I beat you on that.
Does it have to be done tomorrow? It can be, it can be done.
It was extended.
It was. So you guys can, you can work it out in the fullness of time.
I'd like to move that my resolution be adopted as amendment, as amended with the friendly amendments.
Right. I second. Commissioners, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, 7-0.
Bang.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Oh, thank you also very much. We are really grateful, really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Great job, everybody. Thank you.
And Carol, thank you very much. Good luck tomorrow.
Yes, I agree, Carol. Thank you for all your hard work.
All right, so next on the agenda, Commissioner Finacy. And this is a part where we amended the discussion the Lafayette School capacity issue with Commissioner Finacy.
Sure. All right, I have a slideshow. Can you enable me to share my screen? I think you can. I'm already enabled? All right, let me put it on and then I'll make it full screen and then you should be able to see better. All right, can you see that? Okay? Okay, so this is in response. Originally, we had had a question come from Commissioner Sherman at the beginning of April, asking DCPS about capacity for enrollment. And they came back that our current enrollment was 934. We had capacity for 976. That was a surprise to me. I lived by the school. I was on the school improvement team, which worked through the plans for the renovation. And the school was built for 805. The deputy mayor of education, they had originally asked for 835, but in their population projections, they forecast a 34% drop in school-aged children over the last decade. Obviously, that did not happen. And then in 2019, the school had a population of 816, was considered overcrowded, added three basement classrooms. So I was like, well, how do we get to 976? Because 816 plus 25 kids times three classrooms is 891. So I've been asking DCPS for two months for a tour or for a map to explain the capacity. They haven't given it. So I'm going to show some information. This is public information, including as-built plans from 2016 and the RFP from 2019 to kind of show where we are and maybe some concerns that we have had from parents about schools, the school being overcrowded, and also students in fourth grade in particular being in windowless rooms. So that's sort of where this is coming from. So that's sort of where this is coming from. This first slide that you see here is the layout of the main first floor as it was originally designed in 2016. The library is in pink. This art room is green. Um, the pre-K wing is to the top right. The gym in Northampton is over to the right, kind of diagonal. The kindergarten is in the bottom middle and I think this was first grade over in the bottom left. Um, what you see with the green square or here and the two red rectangles. Um, we basically made it sort of like mini egg cartons. There were about five classes per grade. But then each grade had a workroom or two. Oops, sorry. Let me go back. Um, and some of the workrooms like here, they're in red, were small. This one here in green is large. Um, and that was to give the option later to add classrooms if they were needed, but otherwise could be used as common areas for group projects or presentations or small interventions, things like that. Um, so here are the as from the as-built plans. So the as-built plans give something that, um, DCPS has not given us, which are the square footage. So it might be hard to see from your screen, but like, for example, the art room is almost 1,800 square feet. This computer lab is 868 square feet. Um, this workroom here is 731 in the red. So, um, that's the first floor, the west, uh, side, the Broad Branch roadside. Okay? Um, if we go to the west side, hold on one second. I think I messed up that one. Okay, and this one, yes, this is the first floor, the Broad Branch roadside. The other one was the east side, I'm sorry. But you can see that the, the classrooms that are yellow, they're pretty big and they, they do vary. The smallest one here is 777 square feet. Um, on this side, we, uh, this workroom is 777 square feet. But we have some classrooms on the kindergartner side that are 692 square feet. And I, I see a typo on that previous slide that I will go back and fix. So you can see from this slide of the upper, uh, floor, you know, some of the workrooms in red are quite small, but some of them closer to Broad Branch Road are bigger, almost the same size as a classroom. Am I going too fast? Do you need me to stop?
No, you're good.
Okay. So here we get the second floor, the east side. So you can see the classrooms, which would be like this one in yellow. The classrooms basically range from 778 to 974 square feet. This work, these workrooms are 493 and 510. They're smaller. Those are common spaces slash workrooms. When we go to the second floor west side, the classrooms, they range from 866 square feet to 929 square feet. And the workrooms, which were common spaces then, they could be converted to classrooms and they ranged, uh, 788, 822. So roughly comparable to the classroom. Okay, so when the school opened in 2016, that these were workrooms. Uh, this is the basement level as-built plan. This is a storage mechanical area with the red arrow. Um, and this area over here is towards the basement and a multipurpose room. Um, and here is our cafeteria in the middle and it is just over 3,500 square feet, the cafeteria. So in 2019, the RFP was, uh, sent out to build out the basement. The, um, DGS declined to finish out the basement in the original school renovation. They said they were $500,000 short. So three years later, they refinished it for a couple million dollars. Or finished it, I should say. But they said at the time that it's a public elementary school serving 816 students from pre-K through fifth grade. And they said the school is currently overutilized. That means crowded. So they were gonna renovate, um, some spaces in the basement to give three classrooms and two um, small group resource rooms. So, and this is from the RFP, one of the attachments. You can see the enrollment was 816, three lunch periods. And it was considered overcrowded at 816 and they were gonna add 4,700 square feet. One of the things that they do when they are building schools is they have something called ed specs that they try to adhere to. And those are requirements for all kinds of things, you know, whether it's a classroom or a lab or a storage room or a library space or a kiln room, bike storage, there are requirements for everything. It's like unbelievably detailed. Um, and we went through this with the first, um, with the first renovation. With the second one, I just want to highlight two pages from it. One is when you look at the specs for a school, then pre-K and kindergarten classrooms are supposed to be, according to the 2017 ed spec. So this was done after the Lafayette renovation. 1,100 square feet, just over. Our pre-K first classrooms are 777 to 974. So ours are smaller than the 2017 standard. A grade two through five classroom is supposed to be 900 square feet. And if we look at only the classrooms from the original renovation, we could have something from 788 and actually there's some in the 690s that I need to put in there to 927. But the problem is where, that that was a school built for 800 and they're saying we have capacity for 976 at 25 kids a class. That's seven additional classrooms. And so that requires using some of these small workrooms perhaps or going into the basement. And this is another part of the ed spec. For pre-K to kindergarten, first grade, they're supposed to have windows to provide natural light and egress. Parents are alleging that we don't have that in the basement. Uh, but those would be fourth grade, but fourth grade also requires windows to have, um, to provide natural light and egress. So my question is basically, um, how are, how are we making this work? One other thing that I see is that for, um, a 700 person school, the cafeteria is supposed to be 4,300 square feet. Our school is over 900 right now. This is the biggest ed spec that you get. It doesn't even go up to a school our size. Um, and they, it's interesting, the intervals between 325 to 400, that's 75. Then it jumps 100, then it jumps 200. Like that's, that's not how you're supposed to do a number line. You're supposed to have even intervals, but we are off the rails, right? We're so much bigger and yet our cafeteria is roughly the size for a 600 person school. So when I look at this, um, you know, I feel like they are either going, they're either putting our kids in spaces that are too small, spaces that don't have windows, taking away multipurpose rooms that were designed for performances or for the pre-K to first grade music, art, PE teacher. You know, what, where are they finding those spaces? Cause when I looked at the as-built plans, I just don't see how they make all those extra kids fit. And when I look at articles also about school size, um, and as a teacher, you know, it's, you want people to know who you are as a child. That is one of the greatest gifts you can give a child is to know them and like them and have them feel known. And when you are in a big school, logistics get hard, lunch gets hard, recess gets hard, field trips get hard. But the biggest and most possibly negative impact is that it's harder to know all the kids. So this is an interesting article. Now, it, it looks at older kids and 15 to 16-year-olds. But, um, and they did this really interesting 3D statistical model um, called a CUSP model. But basically they found that when the school size gets beyond 800 kids for the older kids, not even for the little ones who need smaller kids. And class sizes of 27, they, it starts to break down and the school is not, it doesn't function as well. You get a law of diminishing returns. And when I went back and looked at research from when I had, um, started teaching, and so some of this is older, but you know, yes, kids have the internet, but basically a lot of childhood development is still the same. They found, a lot of people found that, you know, a good school size is really around 500 kids or fewer. Um, the bigger schools, um, they thought it could work with, uh, if the population was not at risk and most of Lafayette is not at risk. So I would say we would be at the high end of this. But you know, with, if you have a high-risk population, you want to have a lower school, a smaller school. And that same research also found that a school the size of Lafayette is more important, more appropriate for an elementary school. So since DCPS has declined to provide any data and the publicly available information from the RFP from the as-built plans, from the presentation that DGS made to the National Capitol Planning Commission um, indicates that our kids may very well be in smaller spaces, uh, without windows. I, um, do not think that we can go with DCPS's assertion that the school can handle 976 kids. I just, I think they are shoehorning our kids in. I think when we look at the, um, ed specs, what was required, when we look at the map and the size of the spaces, it doesn't work. Um, and so those were my findings, but like I said, I've been asking DCPS for two months and gotten nothing, but I think this information is accurate. And that concludes my presentation.
Commissioner Simmons and Goslin. Commissioner Finacy, uh, can you pull that down for now? You might have to pull it back up if well, that way, cause I can't see.
What do you want me to pull down?
The presentation. Presentation.
I can't.
As the only commissioner on here with children that go to the school, I am upset that we would put the school layout on this recorded meeting out to the public. So there has been a, and, and maybe I'm taking a little too personally, but there has been a community member that has been, I would say quasi-obsessed with me. And there are school shootings, there are other security, I'm just really concerned that we would put this out here on the website. We don't know if there's any situations with families, um, where where they want to just make sure their child is safe at school. And hypothetically, I don't even think this is the same layout today, but just hypothetically, I can empathize with DCPS in not wanting to give us the layout because we just put this out here. And we don't know other people's and their family's situations and we just put where the kids are here. So if there's an active shooter and they wanted to hypothetically kill someone kid, they see the layout. Oh, pre-K is listed here. Uh, maybe it's this window. I, I, now I see, I, I'm just really frustrated and upset because we have all these incidents. My three-year-old, when he started at DCPS, had to learn about active shooters. And here we are breaching our system for our students and showing the map of the school. I understand the point you're trying to pull through, but I don't think showing the map was, was very helpful. Um, I'm just really upset because my child is young.
I, I hear you, um, and I am upset that DCPS refused to provide this information. This is all publicly available information. It's not hacked. It's all out there. So anybody who wants it can get it. It's all publicly and it's been out there for eight years. So if DCPS thinks it's a security risk, that's on them because it's been out there for eight years. I asked for a tour. They didn't give it. I asked for a meeting. They didn't give it.
But I'm a parent. If you wanted a tour, I, I'm, I'm a parent. I go to the school every day.
I've asked for one and they haven't responded.
You, you have to leverage. I'm a parent at the school. You could have leveraged my relationship with the school to get the tour.
Um, as the ANC commissioner for the school, I would hope that I would be able to leverage that relationship and that no further relationship would be necessary.
Okay, Commissioner Goslin.
Uh, let, let me say first, I think as as public officials, we need to be able to look at this information. I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm, so I don't, I think that, I, I think that the Laura has just answered the question that this stuff has been out in the public and I'm not surprised it's been out in the public. We, the public money was spent to build the, to, to, to renovate the school. Um, presumably was presented then to. I, I'm a little confused about what, um, Commissioner Finacy wants from us. Um, uh, I, um, I, I, a few questions, ed specs. Is that a, is that a, a D, a DC commitment of, to these standards? It is, is it a professional standard that, that the education, uh, educational leadership groups, uh, propound? How, I, I, what, I mean, I, I understand you're, you're comparing it to these things, but what's, whose ruler is this?
Sure. So DCPS basically has a manual, a standard, um, that they think new schools should be built to. Right? So, and they go through and so there are requirements for everything. So if you have, for example, a classroom, I'm down here on this line, page 24, it would talk about the classroom. It would talk about, um, how many square feet you might need. It would talk about the type of storage that you should have. It would talk about the amount of light that you should have. It would talk about the type of furniture that you should have. So that basically, they're not reinventing the wheel. They have, you know, kind of a standard. Now, you, you can choose your paint colors or whatever, but one school is not gonna get, is not supposed to get like a 2,000 square foot room and another school get a 500 square foot room.
And so these standards, the, uh, you might go back to the title page. These standards are for schools going forward from 2025 or 2024.
These were the 2017 specs that were in, yeah, that were in play when the 2019, uh, finishing out the basement was done.
So let me just go back to the simple question, uh, what, what do you want this ANC to do based on the information you've presented?
Um, I think based on the constituent complaints that we have had about the school being overcrowded and kids being in windowless rooms, I would like, uh, DCPS to talk with us, perhaps have us into the school and sit down and, and so that we can work out, uh, really how big is the school? How, what, what population should we have and can the facility, uh, what, what can it handle? Because I think right now, not only do we have too many students for the facility as is, I think they're proposing to make it even bigger and more crowded. And I don't think that's fair to our kids or to the teachers. Who might be, I've talked to one person who taught in one of the small converted workrooms. And that teacher said, you know, it was really only functional for about 21 students, but that teacher had more.
So, so, so are you gonna be advancing a, 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 a resolution or a, how, how, how do, what do you want to handle this tonight?
Well, I thought it would just be an initial conversation. Uh, perhaps, perhaps we take it and go back with, to, uh, request, work up something with a request to DC PS to meet with us and provide the information that they have heretofore been unwilling to give us or unable to give us. Because they said they were, they were finding, you know, the diagrams difficult or whatever. I'm not, I'm not sure what their issue was, but.
Okay. All right, but that's fine. I mean, I, I
Yeah. I mean, people are complaining about being overcrowded. And I'm like, okay, let me see the plans. Let me see how crowded it is. And they wouldn't come up and it's like, you know, I, I think our constituents may have legitimate concerns. And I also think we have a, a kind of a corollary concern in that if the school is, is going to be um, bigger and bigger, it's going to be getting beyond what is a good size for an elementary school. We are bigger than many high schools in the district. We are bigger than many middle schools in the district. And we are bigger than an ideal size for an elementary school. It is not a linear, kids are not linear equations. You can't just add 10 more kids and 100 more square feet and just keep doing that ad nauseam. That's not how You can't just add ten more kids and a hundred more square feet and just keep doing that ad nauseam. That's not how children work.
Maybe we'll find a solution at what the former ECC or A solution, but.
I think, I think Maray owns it now, so I, I would doubt that.
Let me go to Commissioner Nig.
Thank you. Um, I just, I just wanted to mention that, um. I recently, within the last month, toured, uh, merch. A lot of the kids in my SMD go to merch. And I asked merch for a tour. Um, I asked the principal and it was, um, no big deal. So it's, it's puzzling to me why there's all this pushback about getting a tour at Lafayette.
Okay, um, myself, then Commissioner Sherman and Commissioner Simmons. Um, so I find that last piece of information very interesting and it's always good for. The commission and commissioners to share information like that. I had no idea Commissioner Nagy that you had the tour. But, um, it's good to know that. Uh, we got the tour without a lot of hassle. Um, because I would expect that local schools would accommodate, you know, the sitting commissioner.
Agree, and that's why I'm sharing that information.
Yeah, for sure.
With everyone now.
And that's good for Commissioner Finacy in her response to DCPS for the continued request for Lafayette. Um, and Commissioner Finacy, you kind of answered some of the questions I had. So I, I know about the, um, continuous complaints about overcrowding. I know Commissioner, former Commissioner. Um, Zeldin dealt with that a lot and brought that a lot to the ANC. I did not know, and one of the questions I was going to ask you is about the use of the basement and those other general purpose rooms. If we had any even anecdotal information and you provided it. Um, that they were being used, um, you know, for unintended purposes, you know, like the art room being converted into a classroom. Or kids actually in a basement, but you said you talked with one person that. Taught a class, you said in an art room?
A former workroom. So the, the common, the common space room that was smaller, yeah. I mean, I, they said that, yes, there are windowless rooms in the basement. Um, I understand, I have heard, but I haven't seen. Um, that there may be additional people having to have offices in the art room now, that it's not just the art teacher's room. So, and, and then I've just also talked to different folks who had. Um, worked in roles where they used to feel like they really knew all the kids in the school and now they don't with the size. Um, one thing I would also say, the ed specs, when they, you know, jump up like this and kind of stop at seven hundred. Sometimes budgeting issues also do that as well. Some, uh, things are given per school. Um, it used to be that there was, for example, just one nurse per school regardless of size. I don't know if that's changed, but, um, but some things are given sort of on a per-size basis, but. You know, we got small, medium, large, extra-large, but Lafayette is like a XXL. And there's no extra. Sometimes for those things, we're still capped at the XL budget.
Okay.
And that's also a concern.
Okay. Well, thanks for pushing on this because I do, you know, it's some very curious questions and the community has a right to know. You know, what's really going on in the building and the, the usage of the space. Um, I would ask that you include, um, both the Ward Three and Ward Four State Board of Education reps. Communication. Um, Ward Three rep Eric Goulet is like a pit bull on the overcrowding issues. And particularly as they impact Ward Three. He, um, as you guys know, helped, uh, one of my parents on, uh, pre-K, um, kindergarten attendance issue. And is still being a pit bull on that issue. Um, and then we have a new Ward Four State Board of Education, Dr. Colson. So she's new, but it would be great to include both of them. Um, and get their, you know, maybe assistance. But I think, you know, just my recommendation, Commissioner Finacy is, you know. Maybe we need to do a formal request. I know we did email, but, um, maybe a request officially from the ANC. Um, but I do think we need to get some answers on this. So thank.
Okay. Okay. I, I can draft something and send it up to you. Uh, Commissioner Gore, and then maybe for review and see then if we want to send it out later. Sound all right? Okay.
Sherman?
Um, yeah, thanks, um, Commissioner Finacy for this. I think it's, uh, very, it's critical information and I, and I recognize that it is public. Um, I, you and I have talked about the overcrowding problem and I am very supportive of your work. Uh, I have six hundred and three children under the age of eighteen in my district. A hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five of those are elementary age kids. New families moved to this district because of Lafayette. I just welcomed two new families in the last month. And they claimed both of them that they were here because of the school. And when they hear that there are, uh, capacity issues, they obviously show concern. So this is a live matter for many, uh, I dare say hundreds of my constituents. So I offer myself as a co-sponsor, uh, with you on these matters going forward. I'm happy to work with you on them. Taking, uh, your, your lead, obviously on this, all the great work that you've done. But this does affect my district and my constituents directly, so I'm, I'm, I'm very interested.
I mean, I think all, uh, with the exception perhaps of Miss, uh, Commissioner Nalagi, who, some of whose kids go to merch. I think most of us, our kids are at Lafayette in our districts.
Yep. Yep. Commissioner Grunwald?
Uh, yeah, um, um, Lisa brought up, uh, Eric Goulet. He was our, uh, Ward Three rep for education. And I'd just like to point out that Mr. Goulet said that, in his opinion, no more development should occur in Ward Three. Until we got another school. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Any community comments? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Finacy. Um, Commissioner Nagy, you had your hand raised?
Just super quick, I, this is not to say that kids in my SMD don't go to Lafayette. Um, they do because merch is out of, out of balance for them. It's, it's a lottery to get there. But they still get there. So I care about Lafayette too.
Yeah, a hundred percent. We all do. Great. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Finacy. Um, so we will move on the agenda with Commissioner Sherman and the Maray Field Task Force issues.
Right. Um, so mindful of the time and we're about an hour and ten minutes over. Um, I want to cut right to the chase. The, the question of disbanding the task force is one that. The commission anticipated when the construction phase of the project was completed. And the construction phase of the project is nearly completed. Uh, we're going to hear tonight from neighbors about some pending issues. Trey Holloway. Um, uh, Deputy Head of School at Maray is with us tonight. They had graduation ceremonies today, so it's been a very busy day for Trey. But I'm glad that he is here to follow the neighbors' comments and offer, uh, what Maray is doing currently. To address those concerns. Um, with respect though to that first issue, those are the three items that we're going to cover here as quickly as possible. Uh, but I do want to hear and give time for our neighbors to express their concerns and have Trey to respond to those. Um, I will prepare for the next meeting, a resolution that would then officially, uh, disband the, the task force. I believe it requires action from the commission. And so what, we can park that until then and not discuss it unless commissioners have reasons right now to go into detail on that. As I said, it was anticipated that this task for, task force would cease its operations once the construction phase was, was finished. And, and it, it almost is. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, um, and again, I'll prepare that for the next meeting. I'd like to go to neighbors and, and again, the setup here is, is fairly straightforward. The task force was a vehicle for neighbors to register any concerns they had about construction of the field. That then got passed on to Maray. During the course of the two years that the task force was in existence. The concerns did go through the task force. It did go through to Maray. Um, when a matter needed further resolution that involved a district agency. The neighbors then engaged the, the various departments of government, uh, in the District of Columbia to seek redress. Whether that would be as we have, had happened, some flooding issues with the Department of Energy and the Environment. Many of you are well aware that there were vibrations affecting people's homes due to ongoing compaction on the field. Uh, that necessitated engaging the Department of Buildings. Um, there have been lots of conversations with the Office of the Zoning Administrator, with the Department of Health and so forth and so on. Because w- w- we learned during this process. That ANC's do not have enforcement authority for agreements they enter into. When it has come to seeking redress and resolving an issue between the neighbors and the development and Maray and Maray's contractors. It's been necessary for the neighbors, as I said, to engage these district agencies. I, as their commissioner, have in those circumstances been the liaison with those agencies. And we have had many, many, many occasions where we have gone to the city, uh, for, for redress. Now that the task force is rolling off, there still are some issues that need to be resolved. The neighbors will speak to those and I say Trey will, will come behind. So why don't we start, um, in no particular order, but, um, Claudia, if, if you would go first and let's try. Uh, folks to keep these to two to three minutes each so we can move through them expeditiously. I think we've got five or six people that need to speak.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, as I said last meeting, the choice Maray made to build right up to the property lines in a residential neighborhood. Was a choice that created some harmful impacts. In my case, we discussed cracking and I want to tell you where we are now. At the meeting, I noted that I sent a request about these repairs in December of twenty twenty-four and was awaiting a response. Maray responded after that statement with a meeting of their representatives of my home, at my home on May twenty-second. Maray decided that they wanted two bidders for both the interior and exterior cracking to make sure the bids were reasonable. This meant that Maray was to establish a full scope of work. Along with any scope of work, as you know, our terms and conditions and a contract to do the work. It was decided that three people, including the homeowner, would be reviewing the cracking. And at that point in time, the cracking would be agreed to and documented. It was to take place on May twenty-seventh with the backup of May twenty-ninth. Maray's representative called and said he could not make May twenty-seventh and arrived solo on May twenty-ninth. I asked where the third person was and was told that there would be no third person. I should have drawn the line then, but I foolishly acquiesced. I add that no notes were taken by Maray at the meeting to memorialize this agreement, a practice that has been typical. The Maray representative, who had seen my home multiple times, said he did not know how to document the exterior brick cracking. Or mortar cracking. To that end, he would have to get back to me. Now, really? We went into the interior and I pointed out cracking, which had in most cases been previously sent to Maray in photographs. The idea of documentation and agreement at my home evaporated. And when the Maray report came to me, it was clearly incomplete. The very crack that caused the stop work order by the city, requiring Maray to engage a structural engineer. To review the structure was not included. I asked, uh, that individual, uh, that they provide examples and references of work that their contractor had done. Both interior and exterior. Exterior is particularly important as this contractor must have experience in historic brick preservation. To date, nothing was received. Again, to use the oft-repeated phrase, I hit a brick wall with my neighbor Maray. When Maray called me, I let them know how ridiculous it was that we were again in Nowheresville. Maray then reversed themselves and said for the interior work that I should get a quotation from my go-to house painter, who knows my home inside and out. I will then now revise the scope accordingly and provide that with terms and conditions and his estimate. Unfortunately, as you know, in early in June, it's very difficult to get this because this is the painting season. I will do the best I can as rapidly as I can. As for the exterior, which is by far the bulk of the work, Maray said they will get back to me. Some other unresolved items are lighting. Parking lot lighting was installed. The lights at forty-five thousand lumens were well above what is the brightest street light in the city. The freeway lighting at nineteen thousand lumens per city, I mean, per the city technical spec. I had some other comparisons, thank to, thanks to Commissioner Laura Finisi, who's been a key player, as you know, in local lighting, uh, street lighting. And so a few facts, Maray's lumens at forty-five thousand per pole. In an alley, it's three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight or thirteen times brighter. Their, um, wattage lumens is a hundred and fifty watts is not, which is not considered low wattage. And the Kelvins, which is another measurement, theirs were five thousand. Our local streets and alleys are twenty-seven hundred. The Kelvins have been changed. The wattage and lumens are remained too high. They say that they're going to put the lighting on a timer, but that is a non-solution. The catalog cut for the light pole, the lumens, the Kelvins and the wattage was submitted as a part of the building permit. We would like to see the new, um, lighting so that we can review the photometrics. That of what they plan to use. It's a delicate balance that professionals know and we have access to lighting professionals. Meanwhile, the pole parking lot lighting is also competing with the ECC Nebraska Avenue Building Lighting. Before the trees were removed, that lighting was not a problem. Now that the trees were removed, it is very bright and does not appear to face down, be ten feet from the ground and low wattage. Further, the lighting we understood was for security, yet this weekend, tonight. This, the door, the gates remain open and so I don't quite understand that security aspect. Uh, Trey Holloway of Maray said that neighbors had requested the lighting. But I do point out that in the documentation in BZA exhibits that said, this is what neighbors requested and this how, how we respond. It did not exist. I offer and posit that the vegetation that was shown in the BZA presentation. Where evergreen trees were lockstep along walls would have. Likely minimize the lighting directly on my home and those on Twenty-Eighth Street. The last thing I'll bring up, although it sounds like we're getting to the bottom of the barrel, and we are. Um, is standing water. There are other things I bring up that have community consequences. However, they've been pointed out to city agencies directly and we hope that these are being resolved. Before the certificate of occupancy is, is, uh, established. In the same meeting about the cracking in my home, standing water was discussed. There are four drain basins that Maray placed directly by my property, all within a few feet. However, one is with an inch or two. They don't have positive drainage. The pipes that flow out of them are higher than the bottom of the basin and they're mosquito breeders and they remain filled in wa, with water. So I asked Maray that time, uh, that same time about the cracking and I didn't hear anything back. So I got in touch with DOH. And also with, uh, DOE. And it appears that DOE is requiring Maray to fill these basins with concrete to create positive drainage. The same type of basins exist in the northwest area that is, uh, going to be developed for community use. I'm trying to get DOH involved in that as well. Because those are the same drains, the same mosquito issue that needs to be fixed. And finally, I believe Nancy Voiselle will be speaking about bleachers, the backsides of the fans. I face out my window and per the BZA order, I believe these bleachers are non-conforming. She will address that. In conclusion, I hope the efforts by commu, Commissioner Sherman. Who I admire enormously for what he has done on the behalf of the citizens and residents of our community. Will lead to a better process, better responses and less onus on the residents being harmed that has been experienced thus far. Given the proximity of neighbors, it's of unequivocal importance. Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia. Um, why don't we just segue quickly to Nancy, then we'll go to David and then Josh Curt and then John Axelrod.
Thank you, Bruce, uh, and thank you, Claudia. I just wanted to, I, I won't go into the lights other than to say they are shining in our bedrooms. They're disturbingly bright and, uh, having them on a timer, which is, uh, the. Solution that was proposed by Maray really doesn't do anything because it doesn't change the brightness. It doesn't change. They're shining right into our homes, uh, and very bright. So we know there's an order in place from the Board of zoning, uh, adjustment. And the order, uh, enumerates many requirements that Maray, uh, is subject to. And those requirements were included to mitigate the harmful effects to the neighbors, uh, in the community. And, uh, the neighbors who are the most greatly impacted. And the neighbors who are the most greatly impacted in the community are those who live the closest, and I am one of them. Claudia is my next-door neighbor. She is one of them as well. So I want to start with the goalposts. The order is very clear that the goalposts, the big yellow goalposts, they're not supposed to be up. They're not supposed to be up until the fall season. And the goalposts are up, so my request of Maray is that they be taken down. I did receive, I made that request to Maray. I received a response that doesn't really address the fact that there's a violation of the order, the BZA's order, in having those goalposts up. Now, they've been up for three weeks. And I didn't get an answer that addressed the fact of the violation of the order. The order needs to be followed. We understand there was an inspection today, and the goalposts are up. Apparently, Maray needs them to be inspected. They need to be up for the inspection. I don't know why the goalposts have been up for three weeks, three weeks before the inspection, or any reason that they can't be taken down. I do understand as well from Maray that they're going to be visiting the site on Wednesday. And so my request with respect to the goalposts is that the BZA order be complied with, and that can happen and should happen, should happen now, but let's have that happen on Wednesday for the protection of the neighbors that this developer is subject to by virtue of the order. With respect to the goals, there are goal nets out on the field. These are not in use. The promise that was made, and this isn't addressed in the order, the promise that was made by this developer to the community was that equipment not in use would be stored and not out on the field, where it's not, there's no barrier, it's visible. There aren't trees that are, as they were depicted in the presentations that Maray made. Those trees are not in place. I don't understand that there's any plan that they will be put in place. I think all of the trees they're putting in are in, at least with respect to where my home is located. So there are two large goal nets. They need to be put in storage, which would be in keeping with the promises made by Maray to the community in order to get the support of this body. With respect to the bleachers, similarly to the goalposts, the order is unequivocal about the bleachers. And I did have a response from Maray on the bleachers saying, "We think we're complying." But read the plain English. So I'd like to understand from Maray how having two sets of bleachers, which are in the outfield, they're very, very close to the residences, as close as they possibly can be. They're at the very end of the outfield for the baseball field, how that complies with the order that says one set of bleachers on the first baseline. And these bleachers are very, very far from the first baseline. They're way out in the outfield. One set of bleachers on the third baseline, there's no bleachers on the third baseline. How that complies with the order? It doesn't. If there's an explanation for how Maray believes that complies with the orders, we do need to hear that from the school. Additionally, there are two sets of movable bleachers on the field. They're on the baseball field or on the sideline, on the first baseline of the baseball field. These are supposed to be under the order in storage when they're not in use, but also they don't even belong on the baseball field. So we have four sets of bleachers that are starting right next to people's homes and then going up along the first baseline. And it's not compliant with the BZA's order. I've already discussed the lighting. I do understand also from Maray's response to my questions, which related to each of the things that I'm describing, and my request that Maray comply with the BZA order, that Maray is going to be finalizing things with the zoning folks. Now, I am not aware, and I don't know whether there is anybody in the community that's aware that there is anything open that needs to be finalized with the zoning administrator or the Board of Zoning Adjustment. The neighbors certainly have not received any notice of anything that needs to be finalized with the zoning folks. We understand that the BZA order is a final order, and it needs to be complied with, and that is our request. There are some additional issues I have not contacted Maray about yet, but I know, I understand they've had, they've just had their graduation. These relate to the location of the shot clock and the debris in the public alley. Today, I picked up myself about 10 pounds of twisted metal all over the alley on the side of the field, not on the side of the humps. And it's dangerous. And I couldn't believe when I saw, just taking a walk through the alley, what was littered in the alley. To me, it just indicates we don't care. And I found a used saw blade. I have it all in a box. I can deliver it to Maray, and they can figure out what to do with it. I picked up everything that I could. They should have somebody going out there tomorrow to see what else is there because somebody is going to get hurt. Tire will be punctured, most likely. But, you know, kids play in that alley as well. And these twisted, sharp pieces of metal could go through somebody's sneaker very easily. I'm surprised it hasn't happened already.
Nancy, just taking a second.
Sorry?
No, just keep going, but we've got to.
Finally. The field is open. After sunset today, I looked out, I went out on my deck, and I looked out. There's people on the field, and there's no supervision. We don't even know who they are, but there are people on the field, playing on the field. And it is time now, even though the school hasn't opened the field, that this property be managed in compliance with the order.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Let's keep moving, and let me go to Josh Kern, and then to David, and then to John Axelrod. Josh, if you can come on the screen, it'd be great. Josh, are you able to unmute yourself and join us?
Yes, hello.
All right.
Good evening. I'm actually in the car driving back from Gaithersburg, so I'm not going to go on camera. I apologize for that, and I will try to keep this very short. I and my family live at 5931 Utah Avenue, which is the property that is immediately adjacent to the Maray Field House. And we moved in almost two years to the day now. And we are the beneficiaries of the incredible work that this community has done, and especially you, Commissioner Sherman, and the rest of the ANC commissioners on behalf of the community to make this project as beneficial to the neighborhood as it can possibly be. And I want to say upfront that I am very supportive of the project in general. I think Maray has done a beautiful job with the field. As the previous neighbor was commenting, there have been neighbors on the field as soon as it opened, and frankly, probably before it opened, using it. The kids are very happy to be on it and using it on a daily basis. And I think it's an incredible community asset, and I'm very happy to be, you know, so close to it and be able to use it frequently. So I just, I do, that's not to diminish the neighbors and the concern.
Josh, we just lost you. Josh, if you can hear me.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're cutting out.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, okay, I'm trying here. Let me just cut right to the chase. So the only issue that I wanted to raise this evening is that, about to go, and I don't know the exact timeline, but Maray installed the HVAC unit that's going to air condition the field house. It's about 10 feet from my property line. It's a 24-ton air conditioning unit that is very noisy when it's on. I've been in frequent communication with Trey and the folks who are doing the construction, and he and the rest of the team have been very cooperative and collaborative with me to try to figure out a resolution. I know that he is working, Trey, that is, to find the appropriate mitigation strategy for this. I would just say, for purposes tonight, that this is a very large and very loud machine. I think everyone recognizes that kind of the status quo is not acceptable. And I am eager to make sure that this gets resolved so that I can peacefully enjoy my home when the machine is turned on. And again, just want to thank Maray for basically having the machine off most of the time now until we can come up with the appropriate mitigation strategy. So that's it. Thank you, Commissioner Sherman, and really thank you to all the commissioners and to the entire neighborhood. I know an enormous amount of time and effort has gone into really maximizing this development effort, and I really just feel very fortunate to be on the receiving end of all of the hard work. So thank you so much, and thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Josh. Drive safely.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, David, and then John.
Okay, just unmuted myself. I don't need to be on camera. There's an unresolved issue with one of the two remaining heritage trees on the Nebraska Avenue frontage. Maray's project has had a huge impact on the pre-existing trees. Two of them were called out for special preservation measures in a tree preservation plan. One of them is the red maple tree that has a bump out on the Nebraska Avenue sidewalk. The other is an eastern white pine that is closest to the Maray buildings, the easternmost of the three Maray buildings. Sorry, ECC buildings. Well, maybe they're Maray buildings now. It has a concrete driveway under it that has been newly placed to replace the former concrete driveway. And that concrete driveway was called for removal and soil remediation, or decompacting, as it's called, and that has not happened. And this goes beyond the task force. It goes right to DDOT, who is charged in the BZA order with carrying out the provisions of the tree preservation plan. So I'm going to stop right there, be very brief. The, one of the two remaining heritage trees is not being respected, and a concrete driveway should be taken up. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. John?
Please to say that this, the last two weeks posted sign on Lafayette, I'm sorry, on the Rittenhouse and Utah Avenue alleys. The signs say not for construction access, and it's built trucks tons, except for city trucks, the patients. I'm sorry to say.
John, you're cutting. Hey, John, sorry to interrupt. You're cutting out, so I don't know if you can speak more closely or there's a bandwidth issue.
Two years. And during the.
John, excuse me, we can't hear you, unfortunately. Maybe you're, I don't know if you can reposition your. You can do.
Okay.
Yeah, we had argued for some time during this two-year construction period that Maray's contractors were using trucks going up and down the alleys. The alleys were built by the city as an experimental project to control water. That the alleys are not built with concrete able to withstand construction vehicles. And every time one of the Maray trucks went on the alley, the alleys were at risk. Nancy has indicated what we found in the last day or so. And I am glad to say that this is just a sample of some of the wires that we found on the alley. If a truck went over or a car went over those wires, they risk damage to the car, they risk damage to the alley if they push those wires or metal rods into the construction material of the alley. And obviously, the alley is used by little kids in our neighborhood. They fall on these, they'll be seriously injured. So I don't want to say anymore. Nancy has said what she said about the metal. The city has said what it said about no construction vehicles. As I say, that the city is two years too late. We'll have to live with that, but maybe no more construction. I would say that within the last two weeks, we did see cement trucks going down the Utah alley. So I don't know that it's all finished. Thank you.
All right, so thank you, neighbors, for contributing. I don't think there's anyone else in the community who wanted, who indicated they wish to speak. I want to bring in Trey and have Trey respond to what the neighbors have said. Let me just indicate, and Trey, thank you for joining, and just want to indicate as well that with respect to alleys and some of these other issues, as Trey is aware, neighbors have been in touch, as I mentioned before, with the relevant DC government agencies to address these concerns. DDOT's been very responsive over many months. DOB's been responsive, so has DOE. So Trey, there's a lot there, a lot that you're very familiar with already. Feel free to address these in whatever order you'd like to give Maray's response and the actions that you're taking to address these concerns, and also to meet what ultimately will be the requirements for Maray to obtain the certificate of occupancy. So if you'd like to address all of that, please, go ahead, and thanks for joining.
Sure thing. I would do my best. I tried to take some notes while I was listening. I guess I'll just start at the beginning. You know, I think, I just had to say, I think how some of this has been presented is a little unfortunate tonight because I feel some of this has been presented in a way as if Maray has done nothing or has been completely asleep at the wheel. I understand that for some folks, that may be the feeling or their perception of it, but that's just not the reality. Maray has not been asleep at the wheel, have been engaged. So I felt like I just needed to say that so that those who haven't been involved with this on a, you know, daily, weekly basis, understand that, that we're just not like out to lunch on this stuff. Claudia and I have been in discussion about some next steps, and I took some steps today on trying to move that ball forward. I don't know if I want to get all the details of what she said because I feel like she and I left it in a cordial place last Thursday, and I think it's best that we leave it there. But we're trying to work through these items. You know, she talked about the drains, like she notified me about those drains, and I didn't even get a chance to work on them, and the next day I got a call from DOE. So some of this does take time to work through, and we're going to try to do that. She talked about the lights, and I would just say, I disagree that a timer is not a solution. I do think a timer is a solution so that they aren't on all night. I agree that when those lights were first put in, they were disturbingly bright, and so we had them turned off. The lights changed, and now we've paid for a timer. It was not in the notes that somebody in the community had asked for lights, but during the discussions we had going back almost four years ago now, someone said, "Well, you're going to build a parking lot. How are you going to keep people from congregating? Maybe you should put some security lights in there or something." So we did that, and now we're adjusting. We'll continue to evaluate for adjustments, but those are the things that we've done now. So I would just say, and I think it's allowed for me to say this, I disagree that it's not a solution. I do think that's a solution. So the lights are not on all hours of the night. People have security lights at their house. I have them on my house. I say, in general, about the items that Nancy touched on outside of the trash, I'll set that to the side for a second. But as it relates to these things about the order, we need to get the folks from DOB out there to work with us to make sure that everything is set where it's supposed to be set. We went through a pretty detailed process with them earlier in this calendar year before they issued our final permit to complete the project, to make sure that they were comfortable with how we were finishing out the project. And I imagine we'll go through a similar process when we go get our certificate of occupancy. We have been in contact with them to make sure we're getting some pre-inspections done, get feedback from them to understand. get feedback from them to understand any concerns or comments that they may have about the various elements on the site. We're paying attention to the order and going through the order and trying to place things how they are supposed to be. In terms of the trash, like, that is certainly not our expectation of contractors, that they dump trash in the alley or anything like that. I also know, and I, and I work at Maire, so I'm going to defend Maire, that there are lots of neighbors on that alley also doing work on their homes, and they also have contractors there. And I know I've been very clear and explicit with our contractors about what is expected. They are by no means perfect, and I have to get on them more than I would like to, and I will tomorrow, just to make sure they're on their Ps and Qs. But I don't know that Maire is the only entity that's had things going on back there on that alley. Especially as it relates to trucks on the alley. And there was certainly a time where we had concrete trucks out there a few weeks ago, but that was all coordinated with DDOT in advance with one of their inspectors. So I think that's just important context to have. Josh talked about the HVAC unit. We replaced an existing fan unit that was out there, so we upgraded it to one that was more efficient. The one that's been there, because that building has been unoccupied for some years now, my guess is that there really was no noise from the previous unit. The new unit has been put in, and it's making noise that's disrupting Josh's ability to use his backyard. We have hired an acoustical engineer to help us get this sorted out. I've signed that contract. Until we can get it sorted out, we throttled the unit down. I had some of our folks asking if they could have a meeting in that building. I said, well, there's not AC in it because the unit's too loud. So we're working on that. We're trying to work in good faith with him. David's point about the heritage trees. I will say that the project is not done yet. And so all of these things are on the list to be done. So I can appreciate neighbor vigilance and wanting to, you know, make sure Maire's doing everything that we're supposed to do. But we aren't finished yet. That item is, was on the docket to take care of, is on the docket to take care of. We've been working closely with our Arborist team that monitors the compliance with the tree plan. So that will all be taken care of in the way that it's supposed to. And I would just say broadly, high level, we are not seeking to skirt compliance. We're trying to work with people and be in a good relationship with folks. I, I just want to say that I think that's a two-way street. And sometimes I don't feel like we've gotten good two-way relationship on this. But we're going to keep working at it, because I understand that this project has been disruptive to people's way of life, you know, close to their homes. So we're going to keep working on it. I would ask that folks keep working with us and that we all try to get through this together. And we're going to try to be reasonable folks. I'm going to talk to Claudia on the phone and sort things out. I'm going to work on the trash stuff and do the things that Maire needs to do. So I, I think that's probably most of what I have to say.
Great, Trey. No, I appreciate that. Can you just give the commission and the community a sense of next steps with the zoning, Office of the Zoning Administrator in terms of the certificate of occupancy and sort of the checklist of things that you're working through with them?
So it's the Department of Buildings, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's the zoning administrator's office that comes out or not. I don't know exactly who comes out, but they, you basically set up an inspection time. And so what we've asked for is pre-inspections. So before your official inspection, come out, give us a preview look at this and say, hey, this is not in the right spot. Or we expected, based on the plan, we expected this element to be done in this way. Why is it not done in this way? And either we make an adjustment there based on their feedback, or they say, you know what, like, that meets the spirit of what the order was trying to achieve. And we go through that. It's, I would say it's an iterative, always had trouble with that word, iterative, back and forth process to make sure that they feel comfortable that we have met the requirements of the order. So I don't know when we're going to have them out for that first pre-inspection, but I know it's soon.
Okay, so for the commissioners to know, I did reach out to the zoning administrator, the deputy administrator, whom we've dealt with over the course of months, Elisa Vitale, to ask that they have a representative to tell us what the next steps would be, and they indicated that they would have someone come to the commission in July. So just kind of looking ahead, and maybe, Trey, they were thinking that by that point, any number of issues would be resolved, and they would give the commission a report. So just, you know, I have reached out to them, and that's what they've told me in terms of when they would expect to come to the commission and let us know what the, what the status is. So you're working through all those issues with them now, and many of the issues that the neighbors have brought up are issues that you're discussing with DOB. So the bleachers, the goalposts, these are things that are in active discussion. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, those are all things that we had conversations with them back in like February and March. So I expect when we go to get our certificate of occupancy, they will be topics of discussion again.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, thank you, Trey, for answering those concerns. I appreciate it. Thanks to the neighbors for raising those concerns. Again, as the project nears completion, tying up all these many loose ends, which I know you're attentive to, and the neighbors, obviously, clearly, are also attentive to, are just important matters of business as the project finally gets completed. One thing I want to let the commissioners know about, and Trey, you and I talked about this briefly last week, and that is as we shift into operation mode from construction mode, and we have in the MOU with Maire and to some extent in the BZA order, a number of issues related to hours of operation and lots of circumstances concerning operations of the field that we'll have to take a look at how we as a community here work with you when we see matters that are not in full compliance with those agreements. And that's something that you and I are going to talk further about. We don't have to go into it tonight. But I just did want to flag for the commission that we're talking about this, and perhaps in July, we could come forward with a sense of how, what that might look like with community involvement, obviously. So just tag that. Yes, Peter?
Yeah, I'd just say that as, as we move forward with this, this field, this project has been a centerpiece of the three terms, of the two plus, two, two, going on three terms that I've been an ANC member. And I do hope that the discussion with the community and certainly with you as the SMD commissioner include other members of this commission. If there was a, if there, if we, you, you and Trey and we come up with a way to deal with this and deal with issues on an ongoing basis, I expect other commissioners to be involved in that process. That's my own expectation.
Yeah, well, no question. It's a commission as a whole project. But very good. So.
Can I just, Bruce, I would like to, I'll just offer one other thing, too, that we as Maire, and I offer this more for the commissioners who maybe don't know, we as Maire, like, know how to operate inside of a neighborhood in the community. Our main campus is in a residential neighborhood. So we know, we have 650 kids on a campus, and a lot of them drive. So we know how to manage issues around our kids and our families being in a neighborhood. So we are hopeful that we can figure out the same thing here as well as figuring out how to work with neighbors in a way that maintains good dialogue, that productive dialogue back and forth. I think I want to put an emphasis on productive so that we can all be good neighbors to each other.
Yeah, well, when the, when the fields are open to the community, there's going to be a much wider circle of people involved. There's no question about that. You and I chatted about that, in fact. And I think it's very important to bring those folks into this. And we look forward, obviously, as you and I discussed also, to a community briefing for everyone on the hours of operation and how the people have access. And so those are things that are coming down the pike, too, as we shift into the operation mode.
Yeah, I.
Yep.
I just, I only, there's no, I just, because we're, this is recording everything. I mean, I don't know who the much wider circle of folks would be. I know you and I chatted about some stuff. I don't know that I'm 100% there yet. And so I just wanted to be clear about that. Like, I just, I want to stake out Maire's position around that.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm referring to is the broader community of people who are going to be using the field.
Got it. Okay.
There's a, there's a larger group of folks now that'll, obviously, once the field becomes operational. Was it, finally, is there anything you'd want to tell the commission about your hiring of a person to manage the facility? Certain things that would be helpful for people to know right now?
We have hired somebody. We are working on onboarding them, and they're part of the group that'll be there later this week with us. And they've already been on the site to kind of take things in. So the idea is to have them be our person who is operating the field and, I say operating the field, making sure it's ready for the appropriate use at the appropriate times. And we want to get that person introduced to the community at some point this summer before we kind of really open the field. I know folks have been out there. That is not really what we want. And I've been on the construction team, like, lock this place up. We are still, one of the walkthroughs we're having on Wednesday is about the access control and the gates and the locks and all of that, because we need to get that in place. Once that's in place, I'm hoping it'll cut down on people just out there when they're not supposed to be.
Right, right. Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's important as well. Okay, commissioners, anything else? Any other questions?
Trey, are you going to have a walkthrough for the commission, kind of like what we did at the beginning?
Yeah, so we have been talking about how, what the rollout slash open is going to look like. And so myself, our director of communications, and kind of our neighbor, neighborhood relations person. So, yeah, we'll be in touch about something.
Okay.
Great.
I'd definitely love to see that.
Okay, I think we're done then. Thank you, neighbors. Thank you, Trey. Appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons, are you on up for race?
Yes. So my update for the community on RACE is I wanted to publicize our remaining meeting dates. June 17th, July 15th, September 16th, October 21st, November 18th, and December 16th. Last month, the commission passed on a Lafayette resolution in regards to the RACE committee working with the Lafayette Belonging Committee. And then as of today, we're going to do a 60-day call for new members to join the RACE committee. So I believe if we do that call starting today, it goes until August 8th. Committee members can, who are interested in serving on the RACE committee, can send an email to 3g@anc.dc.gov. And then we'll publish this call for new members on our website as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Just in terms of suggesting names, is that something also, Commissioner Simmons, that you would welcome from commissioners, names of people in our, in our area, or names of people throughout the ANC? How would you like us to contribute to the process, I guess is the question?
I have, any, any members want to join, they can join. I don't have, I don't want to control who can join what. So if people want to join, they can join.
But I'm, I'm referring to non-commissioners, though, if we're soliciting names, I'm, I'm asking about how you'd like to work with us to propose members of the community that we think would be good on the, on the committee, for the committee's consideration.
They can send an email to 3g@anc.dc.gov.
Okay, or I can just talk to you about somebody. If I have somebody in mind, I take it.
Well, I believe the process is for all the committee members to go through the ANC's mailbox, similar to what was done with the ZBB committee.
Right. Yeah, no, I, okay, all right.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right. Next on the agenda is a over, update on the Civic Core ANC survey. Commissioner Simmons, again, do you want to give a survey committee update? Maybe what, what happened over the last committee and where we are with the survey?
Could I just, I just interrupt for one second. I really, I need, I need to go. There aren't going to be any votes in this either.
No, mm-mm. These are all updates.
I mean, I, I gotta be at the hospital or really early, so.
No problem.
Thank you.
That's what I should, Peter.
Okay.
So the only update is that the survey went live. I believe it was June 2nd, and it's live until June 22nd. I know Bruce.
We extended it.
Survey.
Yeah, it went live on.
For the survey.
Yeah, it went live on May, May 22nd.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, May 22.
Yeah, and we've extended it to.
Oh, so, yeah, it went live May 22nd. I'm sorry. I looked at our website, and for some reason, our website updated on May 2nd. Yeah, May 22nd, and it's live until June 22nd.
And actually, we're extending it with the card that we're sending out, correct, to June 29?
June 29.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on survey committee update? Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Okay. Regarding the ANC mailers, I worked with Postcard Mania, designed the mailer, sent it to the commission, had a couple rounds of updates between the commission and Postcard Mania, and finally got that approved. It had to meet their specs. They're very strict on the size, the content in terms of bleed over and things like that. There will be about 6,000 mailers sent. We are doing every household in the ANC. And the way they did the mailing list is they actually took the map, the new map for ANC 34G, created boundaries around that and extracted all the household data. So they did, you know, obviously, all single-family homes, apartments, anything that has an address in that area, and it's roughly 6,000, over 6,000. The mailing was scheduled for today, so today should have been the date that it, and I checked the portal right before we got on. Should be mailed out starting today. Probably will hit post-off boxes. I would say probably by the end of the week. I will double-check and send an email to the ANC. But they might start hitting our mailboxes late this week. They did all the mailings first class. All are being sent at one time. So it's no intermittent or, you know, intermittent drop ships or anything like that. It has a QR code on there, contact information in case any community members want a paper copy of the survey. And it points also to some of the fact sheets that some of the commission members developed. So there is like, I think Bruce did a Q and A PDF, Laura and Peter did a document. Some of the things that we, you know, I, actually, I put on the front to give community members updated information to help them take the survey. So with that, we should be good on the mailers. And I would just encourage, you know, once, I will let the commissioners know when they're hitting mailboxes, because in the portal, you can actually see, like, you know, how many are hitting per day. So I'll let everyone know where we are with that, and that'll be a good point in time to start, you know, shooting out additional reminders on social media, putting in your newsletters that, you know, people will get a mailer soon, check their mail, take the survey. So that way, you all know when that's occurring, and you can respond accordingly. That's all I have. You all have any questions on the mailers?
No, that's straightforward.
Okay, great. Michelle, you have your hand up? Michelle Wilson?
Yes, yes. I sent you all an email at about 6:15, so I suspect none of you read it since it was so close to your meeting time. I, I just want to say, I have been hearing from some people, and there is quite a bit of confusion out there about the survey. And unfortunately, it seems like people don't quite realize that they can say in this survey, no housing. And in my email. And in my email, I mentioned um some of the language, like just that you have on your website in general. You know, first of all, you call it the Civic Core Design Concept Survey, which makes people think it's just about the eight proposals. Uh, and then when you go on, then you say, "The survey seeks to understand community preferences for the proposed designs and perspectives on housing at the civ- civic core more broadly." And I know by saying that, you are thinking, oh, you know, this is because we include a question, you can have it or not. But I think for the general public that is not following this as closely as, as I am, and as you all are, some of them are not quite understanding that, uh, because I heard from one friend whose husband, she had, she said she had to twist his arm to take it. Because he was like, well, I don't want any housing there, why don't I take the survey, thinking it was just about the eight proposals. So Bruce finally did a um, uh, a Q, a Q and A about, or, oh, sorry, frequently asked questions on May thirty first that he posted in the listserv. And I thought that was really good, because it did address the thing about if you don't want housing. Um, and it also said it isn't a done deal yet. I thought it covered everything, you know, well, although I wish the point about not wanting any housing was higher up um in the list of questions. Um, you know, the other thing is, a lot of people are having trouble with this concept of they say no housing, and then the survey seems to take them through the rest of it. And again, I know you say, that's just to, you know, get your, whatever, if you want to weigh in, but people are being very confused by that. Um, so I, I can suggest some like, although it's too late to change the language on the survey. But that May thirty first thing that Bruce did, did address this. Um, my point is, I hope in all future communications, you make it clear that if you, if someone doesn't want housing, there is a question on that in the survey. And I would suggest using uh maybe with some tweaks, that May thirty first post that Bruce did as, you know, answering people's, uh, send that out to everyone, so they can see that. Because he put it on the listserv, but a lot of people aren't on the listserv or only look at it, you know, once in a while. So a lot of people aren't seeing it, but I'm just starting to hear, like I said, um, people aren't quite understanding it. So uh, anyway, so I, I, I think we need to be more clear and direct that that is an option. You know, otherwise, people are gonna feel like, well, I don't want, I don't want any of these proposals, I'm just not gonna even bother with it. Not realizing they can still say on the survey that they don't want them.
Well, the Q and A was, um, I did a bitly link to the Q and A, if I'm not mistaken, I'm very tired, so.
We all are.
If I'm not mistaken, I did a bitly link to the Q and A on the mailer flyer.
Okay, I'm sorry, was it to the one that Bruce did? Because some of the Q and As don't get into that as much. Okay, that was the one Bruce did on May thirty first.
I believe so.
Okay, excellent.
And uh.
And, and maybe we could.
I think, you know, the A N C has been very clear that we had a not, and I think we've all, we've said that for a long time, that we had an option to, um, okay.
Yeah.
No, that's not the one linked, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I think you just have to understand, a lot of people just aren't paying a lot of attention when they just see, if it's not spelled out very directly, you can say you want housing or not, you know, when it just says, your perspectives on housing. It, it doesn't always register.
Yeah, okay.
Like, it's different when we know the issues, but most people, or when we know this whole thing, most people don't. And so, you know, you gotta be like Hemingway, just short, direct language, okay?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Grunwald?
Uh, yeah, just to, Michelle, just to clarify, the, uh, one of, the last document that was listed on the mailer uh is Bruce's overview summary um of the, of the whole issue. It's not the Q and A that was, that he respond, you know, that he posted on the listserv responding to the confusion in the survey, just FYI.
Okay, okay, it would be really good if we could get that Q and A out there, because that kind of covers everything, you know, maybe.
I, I recommended, I recommended that, but it wasn't uh taken up.
Yeah, that's too bad, because I'm hearing confusion.
Well, I distributed to, to um all of my constituents via my newsletter, and I'll do it again, and we can, we can, I, I can republish it. So I'll put it back up on the listserv, we can republish it otherwise to.
And maybe get it on the website, and I would urge, you know, anyone who sends out emails to their constituents to, to include it. You know, but again, obviously, that's a lot of people who won't, won't see it still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, and then commissioners, we need to discuss our special meeting date. We don't have to do that right now in terms of a date, but um I'll send around an email with maybe a doodle poll, but please keep the week. Oh my gosh. Ooh, that's the week of July fourth, um, oh my gosh, that's a terrible week. We are gonna have to have, and we need a seven-day notice. Wow.
I, I think Lisa, that um we should plan on July seventh or eighth before the tenth, because July fourth week is bad, obviously, as you just, as you just acknowledged.
It's gonna have to be, I mean, that's not giving us a lot of time to turn it around. But, yeah, I think, you know, everybody's gonna have to probably, oh my gosh, we got, that's our regular meeting.
We're on the, are we on the seventh or are we on the fourteenth?
The seventh, I have the seventh in my calendar as our regular meeting and the fourteen.
In the fourteen?
Yeah, my calendar is.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought it was the fourteenth and the twenty eighth is the.
Okay, so you're probably right, because I just do like the every other thing, and it sometimes misses out. But yeah, that Monday, save, you know, for our special meeting.
Right, right.
And just knowing that um you know, and I don't know how this commission is gonna handle this, because, you know, we've had a lot of debate about working on things ahead of, and I, I just don't want to get into that. Um, you know, it's like I told Carolyn in the email, I'm, I'm not going to get into these discussions. I want to just work on business, but we're not gonna have a lot of time to come to agreement, pass a resolution, and make edits, friendly amendments, and get it out. So we can do, you know, the seventh, but we're gonna have to think about how we're gonna work as a commission to get this done.
Right.
Because if we spend this meeting fighting and debating, we're done. I mean, really.
Right, I, I think the, the critical point is that whatever position the commission takes and positions that other commissioners take that are to be discussed and debated and have public participation, doesn't mean that there can't be work done in advance on certain issues. It's just that if it's all buttoned up and all the conversations have happened ahead of time, then the public was never part of that, that's all, right? So I recognize the challenges here, so it's a balancing act.
Right, and we've all, we've all, and I'm not gonna get into it, because we've always said that. But again, that's not how we've operated, so it is what it is. We'll do the best we can, but um I think July seventh, we need to reserve that day. So if everybody could put a hold on that, I'll shoot an email around, and if everyone is in agreement, I'll double check our meeting dates for July to make sure, you know, you're correct, Bruce, I think you are, July fourteenth is our first regular meeting.
Right.
And then we'll have the special on the seventh.
Yeah, I, I checked them the other day, and I, that's what I showed, but I, I could be wrong, but I, that's what I thought, yeah.
Um, I think you're right, and we're actually um running real close to not having a quorum. So um, we're actually at, we're at quorum, if we lose one more person, we're done. So we need to move, I want to move on and do um any other commissioner announcements. Um, I know Barbara was on here, I think she paid, put some things in the chat.
Excuse me, can, Lisa, can I just say something? Can we please, can we please vote on the?
Yes, absolutely.
Can we vote on the minutes from last time before we don't have a quorum?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so.
Well, Corinthia has to, hang on, Corinthia has to do the treasures report, which has a vote, because there's reimbursements in there. So Corinthia, please do that, nobody.
Yeah, I sent the monthly um report.
Wait a minute, hang on, Corinthia, we not there yet?
Oh, okay.
Not there yet, I'm just trying to make sure Liz feels comfortable knowing we will have the core through your treasures report, but after your treasures report, please stay on so we could vote to adopt her minutes. Okay? Okay.
Listening.
All right, so um any other commissioner announcements? I don't think we have any, um, so.
I just, I just put mine in the chat about the purple sensor alert.
Got it, okay, and I think Barbara Rogers put hers in a chat as well. Um, she came on kind of later in the meeting and probably didn't know that we moved them up to the front part of the agenda. Okay, Corinthia, you want to do your treasures report?
Yes, I sent over the um May monthly report to everyone, we don't need a vote on that, but I need a vote to reimburse previous commissioners Zachary Ferguson, his card was automatically charged for the W P forms. We use that for our website, um, I don't know if Commissioner Gore or Goslin, who uses that? But I need the receipt for that as well. Um, so I move that we approve to reimburse commis- um, prior commissioner Zachary Ferguson for ninety-nine dollars.
My second.
And I also mailed, I also forwarded the commission that request from Zach um this weekend, I think it was.
Um, commissioners, any questions on that reimbursement? And we do use it, it's tied to our website, it's what we use to make the documents table, so it's, it's critically needed for the website. Um, and I'll work with you, Commissioner Simmons, on getting his card out of there. I thought his card was out and our card was in there, but I'll work with you on getting that switched over. Um, any questions? Okay, commissioners, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Commissioner Simmons, okay, no, uh, so that's four zero, no opposing and no extensions. Okay, anything else on the treasures report?
No.
Okay, um, Commissioner Nagy, you want to do your minutes?
I do, I'd like to move that we adopt the minutes from May twelfth uh with leave to make technical amendments.
My second.
Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners? All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Okay, four zero, passes.
Thank you very much.
Opposed, no extension, okay. And then um for our next meeting, and commissioners, I am gonna start this on the uh OneDrive, so I'll send you a link to the document. You'll see the agenda as it runs. Um, there's already two agency presentations, one of the most important presentations, I think, um, you probably want to get the word out to your people is D Dot asked to come to present on the Connecticut Avenue Multimodal um project. Um, they said they're not, you know, the bike lane issue is off the table, but they are gonna update us on some of the proposed changes for intersections along Connecticut Avenue. So um Commissioner Sherman, I mean, uh, Simmons and Goslin are gonna be really critical for this, because they have, you know, the avenue and, right, Commissioner Nagy, so you three, and I'll forward everyone that email, but just to let you know, they'll be presenting. Um, and then continued update, well, you know, obviously on the civic core, um, River Smart Homes is, I think, confirmed for the next meeting, and then I'm gonna also try to confirm Chevy Chase Main Street. Okay, and Commissioner Sherman, you mentioned something that you wanted for July, as soon as you figure that out, let me know. Because our agendas are running pretty heavy.
It, it actually is the zoning administrator and D O B, they, I asked them several times to come to this meeting and tell us what the issues were that the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy from Ray were, was contingent on. And they demurred, but did say they would come in July.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll add that on to uh the running toll. All right, commissioners, with that, ten eighteen, this is not the longest A N C meeting we had, but it was sure close. Thank you all for hanging in there um to the end, we really need, needed all of us on, and now we're down to three, so.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
Sorry, um, I saw the, this meeting is being transcribed come up about.
Yeah, I saw it.
Did it transcribe? Did we get a transcript of the entire meeting?
I have no idea.
No.
I have no.
Okay, then, well, that'll be fun.
For having Zoom, is, is that in Zoom, when you go in, there are four or five files for every Zoom meeting, there's the video recording, there is the um transcription, there's the A I summary, and there might even be, there's the chat, so there are all these files. The only ones that I can upload to YouTube for our site, of course, is the video recording. The other documents are available for us to share, the only problem is, is that the A I summary is very geeky. And this is a lot of stuff, the transcription is machine done, so it's also filled with all kinds of.
Yeah, but it, but it's, it's tolerable, it's helpful to me as I do the minutes, because I go back and forth between the video and the transcript to check what I'm writing.
I should have mentioned this when everybody else was on, but it has occurred to me to post to the listserv the Zoom recording like next day, just so we report, hey, this is the recording, you can wa, you can listen to it, right? Or it's at our YouTube site. And also to use that A I summary, if it isn't so quirky that it would be difficult to, to, to edit correctly, I mean, in other words, it's sometimes.
Post the A I, do you want to post the A I survey?
Well, no, I'm not indicating I would post the A I summary, because I'm, I'm saying it doesn't, it's not accurate, right? I mean, you.
I, I, that's what I, that's what was puzzling me, right, yeah.
But, but, you know, some kind of immediate, we do get requests for kind of immediate reporting, like what happened in the meeting? Like, what'd you guys do, that kind of thing, right? And I say, I can tell people, we'll listen to the recording, well, if it's a three and a half hour meeting, nobody's gonna listen to the recording. So I just, yeah, there might be some kind of helpful summary that, whatever, and if that A I thing facilitates that, then okay. That's all.
I know it's a ridiculous hour, but I'm just gonna, since we're on the subject, um, did we record the chat tonight?
I don't, I don't know.
Pardon?
It gets recorded automatically.
For in the Zoom, but will it transfer to YouTube?
No, you can't put, you can only put video on YouTube.
Okay, just, I, I have constituents who care about this question, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, I got it.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Or, and we are, Lisa?
We're adjourned, yeah.
We're adjourned, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.